In accordance with section five of the
No, I can't hear you.
It's Eileen now.
In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, we advise that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the board in town hall and mailing to officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually, indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, August 16th, 2021 via Zoom webinar.
Okay, so we're gonna start with roll call.
Craig Clentner. Jody Sharma.
Here.
Joyce Segal.
Yeah.
Steve Togar.
Here.
Wolfgang Turturis.
Here.
Amy Lawrence.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jessica Glad.
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg. Not currently. Okay, and we're hopefully waiting on John Drew.
So are we able to move on to minutes?
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can do the minutes and we can do the resolutions without
Okay.
So I circulated minutes of June 7th and June 21st previously. I did not receive any any amendments or any corrections.
Okay.
I'm saying you have minutes of just a couple of very minor things. Late this evening, but just very minor, just typo things.
Okay, let me know.
I am, I also emailed you, but it was 10 minutes before the start of the meeting.
Oh, yeah, I don't have it to work. I'm not, I don't have a working computer. I'm on my personal, so I don't get any.
Yep, sorry about that.
That's okay, you can just make them.
Are we still able to approve them, the minutes, even with the changes that you haven't seen? Okay.
Um, does he read them into the record? You know.
Oh. Okay.
Okay.
Why don't we start with the minutes of six, seven, 21? Are there any corrections or additions?
Here's Jonathan, thank you.
Yeah, I just had one. It was not note, Jean Pasternak had also questioned Mr. Keller, but I don't think it was noted in the minutes.
And I was just
Yeah, I, I'm not able to get every minute question, so it probably
That's fine then. Yeah, I just, okay.
And Wolfgang?
Yeah, in line 632, just a spelling.
Start at 30, I apologize.
Six thirty-two, Ted?
Yes, line 632, it should be think, not thing.
Eileen, can anyone hear me?
Yes, I hear you, thank you.
So sorry.
No problem. Okay, I got that. Anything else, Wolfgang?
In that one, no. There's an additional one in the 21st.
Anyone else, any corrections or additions? Uh, would anyone like to make a motion on that?
We all eligible?
Craig, Jody, Joy, Steve, Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe.
Motion to adopt minutes of six, seven, 21.
Thank you.
Uh, for this, it's all, it's, uh, you
Just a voice, yeah, just a
Voice, okay, so all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, minutes of six, seven, 21 are approved. Um, next, we'll move on to the minutes of the meeting of six, 21, 21. Are there any corrections or additions?
Yes, it's in line 544. Again, another, just a minor. It should say makes sense, not makes sense.
Yes.
Anything else? Wolfgang, was that it for me?
That was it.
Okay. Anyone else have any additions or corrections? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion on this?
I move approval of the minutes of June 21st, 2021.
Okay, Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then minutes of six, 21 are approved.
Can anybody hear me now?
You're good, Joe, yep.
Okay, so Joe is here and John Drew is here as well.
And I assume that the board just adopted all the memorializing resolutions and all the minutes?
We've only done minutes so far. We haven't moved on to the resolutions yet.
Joe, are you gonna take over from here for the resolutions?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
If somebody will tell me which resolutions were sent out.
Uh, we received Wolf, calendar 3791, Zhao, calendar 3802, Potash, calendar 3804, and Iomato, calendar 3807.
All right, let's take the first one, which is which one?
Wolf. Uh, Wolf.
Wolf. Is there, are there any corrections or additions to the resolution that was finally sent out? If not, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to adopt the memorializing resolution in the Wolf case?
Eligible are Craig, Jody, Joy, Wolfgang, and Shandrew.
I move approval of memorial, memorializing resolution for calendar number 3791-21.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Joyce Segal.
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis.
Yes.
What about me?
You did not vote on this one. We lost you midway through, so you didn't vote.
Okay, the second one is?
Is Zhao, 12 Ridge Terrace, calendar 3802?
I know the Zhao case. Uh, are there any additions or corrections to the final memorializing resolution? If not, is there a motion? Who's eligible here?
Eligible are Jody, Joy, Wolfgang, Amy, Jessica, Joe.
Is there a, a motion to adopt this memorializing resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt calendar numbers 3802-21.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Joyce Segal.
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis.
Yes.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes. What's the third one?
Potash, calendar 3804. Eligible are Jody, Joy, Steve, Wolfgang, Amy, Jessica, Joe.
Any additions or corrections to this memorializing resolution? Is there someone who would like to make a motion on this one?
Move approval. Calendar 3804, second.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Joyce Segal.
Yes.
Steve Togar.
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis.
Yes.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes. What's the next one, Eileen?
The last one is Iomato, calendar 3807. Uh, the same people are eligible.
Oh, Iomato. Anybody want to, are there any additions or corrections to the final memorializing resolution that was sent out to everyone? If not, is there a motion to adopt it?
So moved. Am I eligible?
No, sorry, Craig.
Go move.
Second.
That was Stephen Wolfgang.
Stephen Wolfgang.
Jody Sharma. Joyce Segal.
Yes.
Steve Togar.
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis.
Yes.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jessica Glad.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes. Right, before we begin tonight's, uh, resolutions, uh, and cases that are before us, I would like to make, I would like to make a couple of comments if I would be given the opportunity. The first is that I once again, as I have done many times in the past, want to thank Joyce Segal, who is a proofreader and more than a proofreader extraordinaire. She takes these draft memorializations and does a fantastic job of going over them, making changes, not only, uh, required to make them more readable, but also to correct them and make them consistently evident that the board has heard. So I want to once again thank Joy for all of the hard work that she's put in and by the way, taken a lot of work off my back. So thank you, Joy. It's really a pleasure. Everybody still hear me?
Yes.
I'm asking only because my laptop said that I'm unstable.
Yeah, your voice
But you all knew that.
Yeah, we all know that.
Okay, the
In and out.
Yeah.
I'm going in and out, right? I'll try to, I'll try to correct that. Um, the second thing I wanted to do was talk a little bit about the attorneys and Eileen Davitt. Uh, most of you know this, I think only because I've said it in the past. Eileen is one of the few people in the state of New Jersey who is the Secretary of the Planning Board, the Secretary of the Zoning Board, and also, uh, the, uh, zoning officer in the municipality. So she's done, and is doing, and continues to do a fantastic job. So it's not just that she sits at our meetings and tells us what to do, but she does that for the planning board as well. Can you all hear me? Okay, the second thing I want to do is talk about our attorney. And now he's not here tonight, Rob Simon, uh, but Jonathan is taking his place. I also want to talk about for a minute how important the attorney is to any board because the statute is very clear. A board does nothing and takes no action until the memorializing resolution has been adopted by a majority of those who sat on the case, except in the case of, uh, use variances, of which there are six, the so-called use variances, where the vote to pass, to adopt the resolution, has got to be by five votes. All right, um, some of you may not know anything about Jonathan Drill. Let me, let me tell you a little about him. I'm gonna hold up now a book that I think some of you are familiar with. Do you see what that is? That book is known in the trade as Cox. For the man who wrote it at the beginning. Uh, and it says that the book is authored by William Cox and Stuart Koenig. Now, Stu Koenig was not only a, a co-author of the book, but he also was, for some time, the attorney for the planning board in the township of Milburn. Unfortunately, he went out to play tennis one night and never came home. But, uh, after his passing, the editor, the revisions and the editing of the book passed to two people, Jonathan Drill and Lisa Johnbasta. Now, as, I think I'm not letting anything out of the box by saying that Jonathan is really the editor in chief of the book, which is known as the Bible in the industry today. And anything that you want to know about zoning and planning, you need to go to the New Jersey Zoning and Land Use Administration. That's the formal name of it. But he, once again, it's known in the trade as Cox. Last thing I want to say, and so once again, we're very fortunate to have a very competent lawyer, does a terrific job for us, who unfortunately or fortunately for him at least, can't be here tonight. He's on a mission of mercy as he's taking his oldest
His youngest, he's taken his youngest son in California.
USC.
But I do want to say that on tonight's agenda, we're going to make one change. The last case of the last night that we met to USC, right? And when we have time sometime, I'll tell you a funny story about my recruiting at USC and UCLA on the same day. It's a pretty funny story, but not for now. Okay, the last case we heard, we were in the middle of when time ran out, which was calendar 3810-21, which is the so-called, um, I think we know it best by its, uh, by the name of one of the, I think the, uh, proposed tenant in the case. Uh, so that case, which is MBK Holdings LLC, Greg Meese is the attorney in that case. We're gonna hear that first because that was the case we ended on at the last meeting. And I think, and Eileen told us that there were five people waiting to speak uh, and ask questions. I hadn't even gotten to the part of the meeting yet where I was asking for comments from the audience. So I think it makes sense to take that case first. Um, now, Eileen, of the people who are here tonight, who is eligible on the MBK Holdings case 3810-21? Are we all eligible tonight?
Craig, I Craig, you were not here
Apparently not. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, Joe.
I'm clear.
You know, I've said all these wonderful things and nobody
Joe, we can hear you, but it seems like you're on a delay. In other words
Who is not?
Eileen, can you try to explain?
So we have how many available?
Craig, did you listen to, did you watch the video?
Yes, I did.
Okay, then everyone is, is eligible.
I can't, I can't. Terrific, okay.
Joe, I, Joe, I Five seconds, bud. There's, you're not hearing that Yeah, so you're talking over us.
Hmm. I don't know how to solve that problem either.
Eileen?
Yes.
If he mutes himself and if he can call in, okay, then we will be able to hear him. It won't be synced with his lips, but he'll be back in sync at least with the sound. Can you try to arrange that with him?
Did you hear that, Joe? If you
I can get a phone from elsewhere in the house.
You have to mute yourself on this. You would have to
When I get the phone, you'll have to give me the phone number that I should call. But let me, if you can wait for a minute, I'm gonna go get a phone.
Joe doesn't know I was a half hour late, so he was saying all those nice things about me and I was late, so I'm gonna apologize again.
Would you like him to start from the top?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I wish he hadn't said anything, quite frankly.
All right, Eileen, I have a phone now. It's handheld, so I don't know how long the battery will hold up on this one, but give me the phone number to call.
And Eileen, you're gonna have to give him the code also, and right now you're muted.
All right. One, three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two. And then the passcode is, uh, you might need the webinar ID. Passcode is nine five two three one zero.
Joe, you're muted.
Can I have the number again?
One, three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two.
I'm sorry, I think I screwed it up. Try this, can we try it one more time?
One, three oh one, seven one five.
Go slower, Eileen.
Yeah. Got it.
Seven one five.
Eight five, nine two.
Leading ID.
The webinar ID is nine two seven, eight two, zero four, eight seven, seven zero.
They're now asking me for my participant ID.
Is, uh, your passcode is nine five two, three one zero.
Joe, as soon as you connect, mute yourself or we're gonna get bad feedback.
Yeah, you're up here.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hmm.
Yeah. Unmute.
Now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's, let's, Joe, let's keep it like that and hope it works.
I'll try.
So we're gonna start with MBK, Joe?
That's right.
Alrighty, so I need, um, Greg Meese? No, yes.
Yeah, Greg Meese, and there's approximately five neighbors, and I believe they also have a planning expert, Peter Steck.
Yeah.
Tell us if they have anyone else.
Okay. We, so let's, let's bring Mr. Steck in. Mr. Meese.
Yes, good evening. Can we also add, Mark Bigos?
Mark Bigos, okay.
Is Rich Keller? And Evan Mayer? Yeah, thank you. Now that we have everybody, uh, Mr. Chairman, you are, you are correct. We ended the meeting uh, when there was questions being asked, uh, from members of the public. And, uh, that was before you asked members of the public for, for comments.
Yeah, I hadn't gotten to that point yet. We were still doing questions. Are there any more questions of the, uh, experts for the, uh, for the applicant?
I have one hand raised, um, from Jay Muriel. I will bring him over.
Mr. Muriel.
Morielli, thank you.
Do you have any questions for the witness?
I do. I have, uh, questions for Mr. Keller, Mr. Bigos, and Mr. Meyer. They are short questions, um, so I appreciate, uh, the opportunity. And, uh, this is my first time speaking before this, uh, committee, so, um, if I, if I go wrong at any point, uh, please let me know.
We'll let you know.
Thank you, sir.
For the record, can we have your address, please?
Sure, my address is one Clermont Drive in Short Hills. And if it was a little bit lighter out the window behind me, you'd be able to see the, uh, proposed site for Jersey Mike's.
I don't.
Okay, uh, Mr. Keller, in your testimony, you said that, uh, with regard, quote, "With regard to dimensional aspects, the building is fully compliant with bulk requirements." And looking at the site plan, it says the rear setback requirement is compliant. But it's my understanding that the B2 setback is 50 feet and the actual distance of the building is 43 feet. Do I have it right that this does not meet the B2 setback requirement?
Yeah, that is correct. We had an error in our site data box. We're supposed to say existing non-conforming condition. Uh, you are correct in that the requirement is 50 feet Uh, you are correct in that the requirement is 50 feet, and we are just below that. That was, uh, that's an existing non-conforming condition that remains unchanged.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we did, we did, uh, I did state that in error.
Okay, and so, it, not only is the building less than the 125 foot requirement, it's actually less than the 50 foot B2 requirement.
Unfortunately, as is common in the zone, yep.
Yeah, uh, I'm aware. You visited the, uh, Boomton, uh, Jersey Mike's and said it was similar, do you know how many parking spaces are in that shared parking lot?
Well, as I indicated in that one, it's a little different. The, the strip of that mall is similar to this strip, however, it is attached to a, a shopping, uh, grocery store. So I indicated, I was not, as I indicated, I was not able to count just cars for the lot, but instead, what I did is I counted, uh, very carefully, the number of user groups that came in, watched them come in the parking lot, so I was able to correlate the number of cars that were coming in, and therefore, the number of patrons within the space at any given time. And based upon that, the highest user load we saw at the, the rush hour on a Saturday was, uh, 12 use groups, and then there were five workers there, so we said, uh, we saw that despite the fact that some of those people took, uh, mass transportation, or could, were dropped off by parents, we estimated that there were 17 cars was the, during the Saturday lunch.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm, I'm cognizant of time, and, and I'll take that as you don't know how many spots there are in the shared lot. Um, and I'm gonna, if I ask the question on the Short Hills Panera, which you said was a similar location, uh, you're gonna give a similar answer that you're not sure how many spots there are in that lot.
I've done work on that side, I can, it's a much bigger parcel, that, that, that application is also, um, the Panera is over 4,000 square feet of space with 120 seats, where, uh, 1,200 roughly square feet. Um, so it's, it's, uh, a similar use variance was granted in that that, that mall also does not meet the 125 feet, as I indicated. The only building in all of the B2 and the Melbourne Avenue B3 that meets this condition, that 225 feet, is the, uh, the King's, uh, supermarket.
Yes, I think you said that last time, thank you. Um, so you don't know the, the number of parking spots in that shared lot?
If you want, I can say that. While you're, I can come back to you with that number if you'd like.
Okay, I'd like to move on. Um, you stated that, uh, if the parking lot was full, that customers would just go somewhere else, that they would drive by. But I, I would ask, what would a person with an appointment at Boho do if all the spots were filled? And what would the delivery drivers for Uber Eats and Grubhub that pick up? And what would customers that use the Jersey Mike, um, prepay, pre-ordered and paid ahead of time on the Jersey Mike's app? Would you expect them to go somewhere else, or would you expect them to circle in the parking lot or potentially park illegally?
Well, as, as indicated both by the IT numbers, the Urban Institute numbers, as well as my actual counting of available spaces at peak hours for this site and the Booton site, um, we estimated it at, at, during the peak, there'd be anywhere from seven to nine, uh, between seven and nine spaces available, sorry, seven and 11 spaces available at any time, so I think it's highly unlikely, the hypothetical was put to me, uh, i- if it was full, what would happen, well, the reality is, um, if it's full, uh, yeah, there, there's a difficulty in parking. If someone has arranged a pickup, um, then they are going to, uh, they're not gonna circle. But, uh, based upon our parking analysis, we think it's extremely unlikely. And to be honest with you, i- if it happens the first time and there's a problem, then people are not gonna order again from that site. But, uh, as I said, wh- what I, what I certain, was certain was that it would not have an adverse impact on any of the residential neighborhoods around this property.
Well, well, when it comes to my testimony, I'll, I'll speak to, to our concerns there. Um, is it safe to say that, um, uh, people today, uh, in Melbourne do park illegally when they're picking up food, um, from, uh, fast food restaurants like the Melbourne Deli, and that it requires police to monitor that?
Well, certainly, uh, we've all seen people illegally park in front of the Melbourne Deli, and police keep quite busy on, on moving them out of there, but, um, and, and we can't control whether people are gonna behave illegally, there's enforcement for that.
I, I understand. Um, you stated, um, you, you made the quote that "we don't want fast food restaurants downtown." Why is that?
Well, I, I've been around the town a long time, and the reason the, the, and unfortunately, some of the, uh, some of the older members of the boards, um, who used to be able to back me up on the derivation of a lot of these ordinances, um, mostly Mary McNed is no longer on the board, but, um, essentially, there was, uh, the parking requirement of one space per 35 square feet, um, was put in place, um, years ago, and it's much higher demand than is typical for, uh, a fast food restaurant, it's nearly double the parking requirement. And that was done, um, quite frankly, uh, in all my conversations with members of the Township Committee, it was done to keep out, uh, fast food restaurants such as McDonald's and Burger King from the downtown, because at that time, they needed owner's parking variances in the downtown. And so, that's where they came from more than 20 years ago. Um, but, the, uh, and still, the, that number is rather high, and whenever we come in with a fast food, um, such as, uh, Live Bread's was technically a fast food, but you generate huge parking variances if you look at the actual number. When you look at actual use, and actually, Live Bread's is probably a bad example because it's so successful. But, the, um, when you look at actual use, the, uh, numbers are, don't bear out the one per 35 requirement. So, that's where I, that's where I come up with the, the notion that, uh, there was an attempt to keep out the big chain, McDonald, Burger King, et cetera, from the downtown. Um, and, uh, and, you know, if you're gonna have a use like a Jersey Mike's, which is a sub shop, not a, not a sandwich, not a McDonald's or Burger King, uh, where, where in the town would you, would you have it except in the B2 highway business now?
Yeah, you went on to say, "We want them to be out in these kinds of areas," and by that, I assume you mean, um, close to resident properties within the 125 feet. Um, and my question, when you said "we want them," have you spoken to any of the residents that order, um, the commercial property or are nearby? And when you say "we," who are you referring to?
Well, first of all, um, when I say that "where else would be more appropriate than the highway business district," I, I, uh, uh, obviously, it's disingenuous to, to say that I, I intended that to mean at someplace less than 125 feet from a residential use. The highway business district is an appropriate place for this type of use, and I, I have to say, having had my office here since 1978, and been a resident here for 23 years, and having participated on zoning, um, uh, ordinance, um, review committees for the planning board, and worked with the Township Committee, um, I do take sort of a proprietary, uh, position sometimes, and so when I say "we," um, I really mean myself as a resident, and having worked with town officials in crafting ordinances in the past. So, clearly, it, there, there are, there are, it is a conditional use, which means the, the, the town fathers think it's an appropriate use, given some conditions, and land use losses, if you don't meet the conditions, you look at each use and the specific nature of that use, the configuration, um, the, the, all of the particulars, and to decide if it's still appropriate, and our feeling was it's still appropriate, even though we don't meet the 125 feet.
I understand your position, I think some of us will express a, a different opinion, thank you. Um, questions for, uh, Mr. Bigos, Mr. Bigos, how long have you owned the property, and do you perform regular inspections, and if so, how frequently?
I've owned the property since 2008, I perform inspections approximately three times a week, and I have staff that does it about once a week on top of that, so altogether, four times a week.
Okay, Mr. Keller testified, uh, at the last hearing that he closed the dumpsters because, quote, "they leave them open." I assume he was referring to the tenants. Prior to this application, have you issued any written notices to tenants to close the dumpsters?
We've had no complaints about the dumpsters being open.
I didn't ask that, sir, I asked if you had issued any written complaints.
We've had no reason to.
Well, Mr. Keller testified that the dumpsters were open. Uh, you may hear from residents who have trash falling into their yards later. Do you permit tenants?
Let me, let me say something about that. I don't have any trash from my property going to anybody's yards.
Okay, sir, um, do you permit tenants to store rubbish items like display cases, tables, decline plywood in the rear of the property?
No, I do not, but we do have a problem with other people dumping, and I assume most people live somewhere near the property.
Okay. Um, and, and if they did dump, would you leave them there indefinitely?
No, if, if they're there, they will eventually be moved.
Thank you. Uh, when was the last time any maintenance occurred on the fence abutting the residential properties?
I'd have to look at my records, but I think it was last year.
Okay. Uh, when was the rear of the building last painted?
Two years ago.
Okay, do you allow cleaning materials to be stored outside the building?
No, we do not.
Okay, do the parking lot cleaners that you employ use leaf blowers to clean the lot and blow trash onto nearby properties?
No.
Okay, prior to this application, have you issued, issued any written notices to tenants regarding any ordinance violations? And if so, can you provide that?
That's my recollection.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions for Mr. Meyer. Uh, Mr. Meyer, how many franchises do you own, and how frequently do you visit each?
Um, hey Jake, I, I have five locations throughout, uh, the area in North Jersey, and I am in them, uh, rather frequently. I, I would say at a minimum weekly.
Okay, uh, there's a Jersey Mike's in, uh, at 182 Ridgeland in Forum Park, is that one of yours, or are you familiar with it?
182 Ridgeland, yes.
That's yours, okay. Um, and is the one that you're proposing similar to that one?
Um, it has similarities, it has a, a front and rear access, and that's 2,000 square feet in the Forum Park store, so it's, it's a larger space, uh, with front and rear access.
Okay, I was there on July 20th at approximately 1:15 in the afternoon, it looked to be seven or eight employees working. I think, um, it was, and, and maybe you can, uh, correct me if I got that wrong. Why would this be more than the four to five max you stated at the last hearing?
Uh, we opened July 15th, so that was the fifth day of our business, our grand open, we over-prepare for the first two weeks in order to see where our business will fall.
So, so there were more than the four to five max that, okay. Uh, you testified that, uh, Jersey Mike employs high school students that don't drive and need parking, but other than the summer months, wouldn't most high school students be in school during the weekday lunch peak period?
Yeah, we, we would typically, and we, and we follow seasonality with business and the weather. Summers are peak.
So it would not be unreasonable to have eight people, employees, drive and require parking?
Yeah, that is very un, non-typical, uh, typically, a lunch rush during the winter months would be four employees.
Okay, but, but in, it, it is possible that you could have as many as eight, and maybe more. You appear in a Jersey Mike's promotional video, in the video, it says employees, uh, arrive between 7:38, uh, 7:30 and 8:00 AM, they get the grills and ovens going and begin preparation for the open at 10:00 AM. Uh, in that video, it shows sheets of bacon frying on the grill and beef roast coming out of the oven, will that occur in the store?
Bacon is cooked on our flat top grill, uh, roast beefs are no longer cooked in the ovens, uh, since the pandemic has hit, that was a change in, uh, supply chain for the franchise brand.
Okay, and you said the, uh, grill hood and ventilation system do not eliminate odors. Can you guarantee the residents living 15 paces from the rear of the building, that they will not smell any odors from the food being cooked on the grill or in the oven?
I can't guarantee that.
Okay, thank you. Can you guarantee that the noxious odors that occur during grease trap cleaning, regardless of where the service truck is parked, will not be noticeable to residents living 15, uh, paces from the rear of the building?
I don't think the exterior of the building will smell the odors of the truck, uh, being vacuumed through a hose directly to the tank of the truck. Um, we do it with team members inside, and it, even in, on the interior of the restaurant, it clears that within 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you, that's it for my questions.
I have a question, Mr. Morielli of you?
Yes, sir.
Do, does your property join my property, do you look directly back from?
Can I make a suggestion? I, I don't think it's proper to cross-examine him until he testifies under oath, he's just asking questions right now.
Fair enough.
Until he testifies.
Mr. Drill is correct. Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question of any of the witnesses for the applicant? Eileen, is there anyone else?
Eileen, you're muted.
Eileen, you're muted.
Jean Pasternak has a question she would like to ask.
Say it again?
Jean Pasternak has a question she would like to ask.
Okay. Can we bring her in?
She's in.
She says to unmute herself, and after she unmutes herself, if she could please give her address for the record.
Sorry about that, yeah, my address is 342 Hobart Avenue, I live in the Glenwood section of, of Short Hills. Um, I have a question, I guess it's a, um, I'm not sure who, whoever just talked about the grease, grease removal, um, it was, uh, whatever, can't remember names, sorry about that, but, um, the, the question I have.
Mr. Mayer was asked the grease question.
Yes, okay, so Mr. Mayer, I have a question, um, I happen to have, uh, some knowledge about, um, the grease, um, removal. I just wondered, you, you made a statement that, um, they, the, the odors wouldn't be, be a, a problem possibly for the 15 pace back, um, residents, but I, I understand that when they remove the grease, that the hose itself is, is, is basically all filled with the grease, and there's also, um, uh, problems in wintertime, you know, with the snow and all that sort of thing, and there, there, there is some residue, so, could that be left behind to become, um, you know, something that's, that, that creates smell? Certainly, uh, not very pleasant looking, from what I'm gathering from the people that I know that do this.
You know, so, um, typically, Jersey Mike's, we don't have fryers or anything, so with our, uh, our grease traps are typically a 40 gallon internal grease trap, that, based on, uh, municipal requirement and things like that, we typically have them pumped three to four times a year, annually. Um, we've had, uh, different store locations where we basically measure, you know, the grease as it grows from the top of the, the grease trap down, and that's what prevents it from going into the township water. Um, the accumulation is fairly low, uh, we're primarily, you know, onions, lettuce, tomatoes, as far as a, a product that's getting, uh, rinsed through the, the producing and things like that, so very minimal runoff of actual food is going into the, the grease, the pans and stuff, we're training to basically scrape the food and throw it in the trash prior to, uh, having it even hit that drain. Uh, the tube and, and how they actually clean the facility, we, we've worked with, uh, Prince of Pool Septic, um, and we, on those days when we're having those grease traps cleaned three or four times a year, we have them get there, uh, extremely, uh, 7:30, 8:30 AM, and we make sure that everything's cleaned up and perfect, because obviously, you know, running a business, I would not want, uh, any of my customers, uh, or anyone to, to be smelling anything or seeing anything that's not appropriate for a restaurant.
Okay, um, and I have a question for Mr. Keller, uh, given that you just described your longevity in the township, approximately the same time I've lived here, um, I just wonder, um, do you feel you have any conflicts regarding this, uh, application in any way, given your time in the, in the town, your business, the people involved in this application?
Where is that one from?
Um, no, I, I don't feel I have any conflicts, we're presenting, uh, facts for a, for a, a client and a case. The fact that I've been here for a long time, I don't think puts me in conflict with anybody, we turn down a lot of applications we don't think are good for the community, we take ones that we think are good.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has a question? For any of the witnesses for the applicant?
There are no hands raised.
No hand raised?
No.
Okay. I'm a little distracted here. You'll have to forgive me. I just got another phone, I think this one is dying. Okay, let's go to the next portion of the hearing.
Well, I assume you mean that anyone in the public wants to test, make, uh, sworn statements and/or present witnesses. Now that would be the time for that, Joe, is that what you mean?
That would be the time.
So, let me ask this, I see Mr. Steck in the Hollywood Squares, and I don't know who has retained him. Has, can someone, you know, raise your hand or tell Eileen, um, if you're the person or people who've retained Mr. Steck, we gotta figure out how to get him qualified, if there's no attorney involved, um, maybe I'll ask him qualification questions, and then Mr. Meese can cross-examine him on his qualifications, and then testify. So, who in the public has hired Mr. Steck, or Mr. Steck? Can you tell us who was hired, you?
Yes, there are five residents. Jay Morielli, Dave Honeycutt, Mark Shepherd.
Please go slow. I'm taking good notes for Rob.
Okay.
Dave who?
Dave Honeycutt. Mike Shepherd. I, I believe, let's see, Ted. It may be Ted Shu. And then there is a, one other. The last name is Z H U.
Yep.
And then Mr. Sahin, S A H I N.
Okay, let me ask you this. Is anyone from that group going to ask you questions? Or have they just asked you to make a presentation?
They have asked me to make a presentation as an expert planning witness.
And we need to get you qualified as an expert witness.
So can you give? Mr. Steck, I represent the board. I don't represent you. I don't represent the applicant, but you've done this enough. Can you qualify yourself? In other words, you know what to do, education, work experience. How many times you've testified, what sort of things you've testified about, to give the board the benefit of your knowledge and background?
Okay.
Does he need to be sworn in?
Yeah, he needs to be sworn in first.
Don't you want me to do it?
I'll do it. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, for the record, your full name and your address and spell your last name, even though we can see it up here.
Peter G. Steck, S T E C K, 80 Maplewood Avenue, Maplewood, New Jersey.
Mr. Joe, the applicant is familiar with Mr. Steck as a licensed professional planner. As soon as he stipulates that his license is still in effect, we have no problem with us moving along, given the hour.
My license is still in effect.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, will you accept him as a planning expert based on Mr. Meese's stipulation?
Definitely.
Okay, so Mr. Steck, why don't you make your presentation?
Okay, thank you. As part of my research, I did meet with my clients. I toured the property. I looked at the application materials. I viewed the recording of the last hearing and reviewed the zoning ordinance and master plan. To lay some foundation, and I know the board members are fairly familiar with this by now. But this is an interior lot that is shallower than it is wide. It has a depth of 174 feet and a width of 200 feet. And as indicated, it's already developed and has been for some time. It's a building that has today 32.28% building coverage. That happens to exceed the maximum of the zone. It has 97.33% impervious coverage that greatly exceeds what is allowed in the B2 zone. It has a non-conforming rear yard. And there are, I guess, not fully striped, but alleged to be 43 parking spaces on the property. The majority of which are on the rear rather than in the front. There is, as you know, it's, the property is right in front of a traffic signal, but doesn't take advantage of that. There is a separate ingress and egress driveways that probably would not be approved today on a state highway because they're too close to the, to the property lines. What I want to emphasize is that although one could potentially count 43 parking spaces on the property today, they're not legal in terms of their layout. Most particular in the front of the property, the row of parking against the walkway in front of the building has spaces only 18 feet wide instead of the required 19 feet. And the parallel parking spaces that are in front, paralleling the right of way are only eight and a half feet wide, which means that the driving aisle is only 22 feet wide. So if this were a conforming design, you wouldn't be permitted to have any parking paralleling the right of way in the front of the property. Because there's not enough room to have that parking there. And more practically, in my opinion, it's a bad design to have parking spaces where a car backs up toward the side of other cars. More traditionally, you want cars to have their bumpers facing one another. So that if there happens to be a connection, there's no damage done. In this case, the applicant is, I guess, allegedly reintroducing parking along the parallel to the right of way. But again, it creates a substandard aisle and it has parking where cars back up into the sides of other cars, which is not, in my opinion, an acceptable way to handle the front of a building. Where clearly there's going to be a lot of action here. The applicant, as you know, is simply replacing a retail use, the Short Hills photo and custom framing with a fast food restaurant. 1,241 square feet. And this requires more parking. And it requires another layer of review that I'll talk about in a moment, and that's the conditional use standard. The industry has changed in the last couple of years. First of all, Jersey Mike's is a very successful operation in New Jersey and around the country. But the nature of the traffic studies that have been done in the past tend to be before there was Uber or Lyft or the other ride sharing operations. Because it's my experience now that especially during a lunch hour.
I'd like to object just for a second on Mr. Steck talking about traffic engineering. I don't believe Mr. Steck is a traffic engineer. And I don't think he's been qualified as a traffic engineer.
That is true. He didn't qualify as a traffic engineer, but he did qualify as a planner. And we're going to permit him to talk about, and he did say in his opinion a couple of times. So I don't think he's talking about the parking as an expert, but rather in connection with his view of the entire premises as a planner. Is that correct, Mr. Steck?
Yes. The, the, the industry, especially the fast food industry, has changed in that the ITI studies that have been done are several years old typically. And they do not accommodate for the pickup function that has surfaced over the last few years. So that's a cautionary note about using the national studies. As part of my analysis, I looked at the area. And this is in the B2 zone on one side of a state highway. And this lot, looking at the other lots, is smaller than most of the lots in the zone. It's smaller, excuse me, it is shallower than the other lots in the zone. Most of the lots in the, the B2 zone are substantially deeper. This building happens to be approximately 43 feet from the closest residential property. And there are four residential properties that are within, let's see, 100, that are in 125 feet of the rear of the space that's to be occupied by Jersey Mike's. While the applicant's engineer and planner talked about the reexamination report and that reviewed the prior master plan. I went back, not to the reexamination report, but to the last comprehensive master plan that was done last in 1991. And that has a full description of the B2 zone. And I'll just want to read that paragraph into the record emphasizing the last line of that paragraph. This is on page.
When you do this, please give the page number from the 1991 master plan and read slowly, please.
Yes, page 36. The B2 highway business area is located along the Morris and Essex Turnpike as well as east of the central business district on Milburn Avenue. These districts, comma, while providing fairly large scale retail centers, comma, are not at the same scale as the regional mall in the B1 district, comma. And they are characterized as having self-sufficient parking supplies and direct or nearby access to the regional road system. In considering any zoning or development proposals in this district, which would intensify commercial development, comma, care should be exercised because of potential adverse impacts on adjoining residential neighborhoods. So that's the official policy statement in the last comprehensive master plan. Now, this is in a B2 zone. The zone to the rear is a, an R6 residential zone. And as you are well aware, Milburn zoning ordinance, while there are a number of permitted uses that include retail and services, medical offices, it puts food-related uses in a separate category. And that's 606.6D. As you're well aware, this application was filed before a recent change in the ordinance. So the new ordinance is not applicable. But that section treats restaurants, fast food restaurants and retail food establishments and eating and drinking places as a conditional use. And it says that the closest part of the structure cannot be 125 feet from the lot line of the single family dwelling. So there was special considerations being offered as a conditional use. And that means that the entire rear portion of this property, and in fact, the entire building, are all closer to the R6 zone than the ordinance recommends. And this is, this is the matter, this is the D3 matter that brings this board jurisdiction. And, and what I would suggest is that you can't just look at this as a simple C variance. It's a D variance. It requires an enhanced ratio of voting, five affirmative votes, and it's serious. So from a practical point of view, while the building is already too close to the rear property line for normal retail and service uses, it is completely within the 125 foot area that does not permit a building that has a food-related use. This is significant because there are a number of non-conformities already on this lot. As you know, in the rear, most of the parking is in the rear. And the only buffer is like a five-foot fence. The code, if this were built anew, would require a 34.8 foot green space, 20% of the depth of the lot, which would not have any parking or any driving. That would be a green space that would buffer the property. And that's irrespective of whether it's a restaurant use or a normal retail use. That's the standard in the ordinance. The lot obviously has an excessive amount of impervious coverage. It has essentially no buffering anywhere on the lot. And as I mentioned, the front of the property has substandard dimensions for the parking that's proposed. And that's going to get all the action because you can't see the parking in the rear. And while the applicant can certainly direct employees to park there, all of the action on this property is going to be in the front. Now, there are other properties in the zone such as where the Panera Bread is, where King's is, where it's the traditional highway setup. Most of the parking is in the front of the building. And that's where all the activity is going to be in terms of traffic and the convenience of the customers. This by its very nature, because there's an unbalance of parking, is going to force the traffic to the rear in an area that's supposed to essentially be all buffer, 34.8 feet of buffer. But this is going to clearly increase the activity in, in the rear. So the focus of this, and I do note that one of the items of relief is the number of parking spaces. While the notice indicated that the applicant was proposing 43 instead of, I believe it was 79 spaces or 50 spaces. The code applied by individual uses is over 70 spaces. But the important point to me is that most of the parking is in the rear rather than the front. And that means that there's going to be a lot more activity in the rear. So this is reviewed as a D3 variance under the Coventry case. And while the applicant's planner and engineer said, oh, it's basically a permitted use. Well, it's a kind of permitted use, but it's only permitted where you can meet the conditional use requirements. And here we have a situation because this lot is shallower than most of the other lots in the B2 zone. The ordinance essentially says you're not supposed to have a building with a food-related use in it within 125 feet. This, it's not just the back of the building. This entire building violates that provision. So what are the impacts that result from that? Instead of having a 34-foot buffer area, we now have cooking and we have venting of odors. And the applicant admitted that they're not going to, they can't handle the smells. They may handle, I guess, some of the particulate matter and the grease, but the smells will be there. While I can't guarantee that if it's 125 feet, there will be no sense to smell. Common sense suggests that when you're 43 feet away from a residential property line, there's a greater opportunity to be offended by those smells. There will clearly be more activity in the rear. And, and human nature suggests that some people will be eating in their cars. I have to swear in the Bible that I occasionally eat in my car when I'm at a fast food place. It happens. And no one, no business owner is going to police that to the nth degree because they're hurting customers. It's, it's a part of the business and you can put up all the signs you want, but it's going to happen. There is going to be some kind of release in terms of smoke, certainly in terms of odors, which the applicant admitted. There's certainly going to be more noise because the applicant has to rely on the rear spaces in order to accommodate the demand from this property. So as a summary of my conclusions, first of all, it's the applicant's burden of proof. While the applicant has talked about the Coventry case, in my opinion, the applicant hasn't addressed the issues, the impacts that will occur by a food use within 125 feet. There'll clearly be more parking activity. There'll clearly be more parking activity. There'll be clearly more noise, in my opinion. There'll clearly be odors that will be accentuated. Again, if another retail use came in that didn't have food, there's no issue. Because this enhanced standard in the ordinance would not take effect. But in my opinion, shifting the dumpsters to the left side of the building, obviously it's some improvement, but it really doesn't affect the level of activity in the rear. The only buffering is a fence that's approximately five feet tall. But that has nothing to do of blocking smoke, noise and, and the, and the, the like. One of my clients will verify that at one, at least at one instance, when the back was being cleaned up with, with leaf blowers, the trash was flying into the air and in fact, over the fence onto the neighbors. So in my opinion, if the board approves this without the protections desired in the ordinance, there will be substantial detriment to the public good. And that's in terms of, of noise, odors and other activity in the rear of the building, which is supposed to, again, absent the food use for any retail use, it's supposed to be a buffer of thirty-four feet in depth. The ordinance has a hundred and twenty-five feet separation. There's a purpose for it. And if you think about it, you could potentially have a double-loaded ninety-degree aisle that would maybe be sixty-two feet deep in the back of the building. And then there'd be clearly enough room to have the required buffer. None of those features are here. This is not a hardship to the applicant. The applicant, again, has a panoply of retail uses that can go in here by right. The problem is, this is a use that the governing body recognizes has additional land use impacts that are harmful to residential homeowners. In my opinion, granting this and acknowledging that the parking in the front is substandard and will have enhanced activity in a substandard format. In my opinion, that will result in substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And it will be substantially detrimental to the public good.
Thank you. Mr. Mead, do you have any cross-examination of this witness?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Steck.
Good evening.
Mr. Check, Mr. Stack, do you know when this property was developed for commercial use?
I believe it was in the fifties.
That's right. And since nineteen fifty-nine, this site has existed pretty much as proposed.
No, that's not, I don't recall there being any food-related uses in it. It, it, the, the physical structure has existed, but the uses have changed. And I don't know when the last time a food-related use was in here.
And the parking has existed pretty much as proposed. Is that correct?
Well, there's some debate about whether the parallel spaces were actually put in, in the front. But it generally has existed for some time in its current arrangement.
And the parking that's in the rear, in the buff, the buffer area, that's existed since nineteen fifty-nine. Is that right?
I would presume so.
And do the people who frequent a sub shop drive different vehicles than those that frequent a mattress store or a telephone store or a beauty parlor?
In my experience, these fast food places often attract contractors on lunchtime. So it's not unusual like at a, if you go to a Wawa, you'll see contractors with vans taking advantage of the cuisine.
And is there any prohibition of a van stopping to go look at a mattress or a telephone?
I know of no prohibition of contractors, except that they tend not to do it every lunch hour.
And with respect to the lot being shallower in the B two zone, how does it compare to the, the lot in the B three zone, which is just to the, I guess that's to the, to the south of this site.
I, well, I think it would be to the east, to the right. First of all, there's one other lot, I believe, that's in the, the B two zone. The answer is those lots are shallower, but that's a different zone. I am comparing this lot in the proper fashion to the other lots in the B two zone. And this is one of maybe two lots that are significantly shallow. But as much as that's an issue, this is also unusual in that most of the parking is in the rear, in the buffer area, as opposed to, to be in the front, which is the more traditional highway orientation.
And, and the use that's in the B three zone adjacent to your client, Mr. Morielli, that's a Mavis Tire Store, is it not?
Uh, yes.
Do you think that use is more impactful than a sub shop?
In terms of the rear of it, I note that my client installed massive evergreens in the back because at one time, I think Mavis or the prior occupant took down trees that were there. In my opinion, tire shops don't necessarily peak in the middle of the day. And in tire shops, people don't eat in their cars. And tire shops don't cook with grease, is my recollection.
And I don't think a sub shop has a machine that puts tires on, does it?
I don't recall, I don't recall one in the sub shop.
All right, Mr. Mr. Stack, the, the zone in the township allows restaurants as a conditional use. Does it differentiate between different restaurants?
It treats fast food and regular restaurants in the same category. But clearly, fast food restaurants, as the name implies, tend to generate more activity.
The rest, the, the code treats all restaurants the same with respect to the one hundred and twenty-five foot distance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, some restaurants are open early in the morning.
Yes.
Some restaurants are open late at night. Is that correct?
Yes.
Some restaurants serve alcohol. Is that correct?
Yes.
Some restaurants have live music. Is that correct?
Yes.
And some restaurants do a full kitchen, robust kitchen of all kinds of different cuisine. Is that right?
Yes.
And what's proposed here is limited in terms of hours, is it not?
It's not open twenty-four hours a day. I'll grant you that. It, it has.
Open at six AM?
Pardon?
Is it open at six AM?
Uh, no, I believe the employees tend to arrive at seven.
And is it open at eleven or twelve at night?
No.
Does it serve alcohol?
No.
Does it propose live music?
Not to my knowledge.
And does it propose a full menu from the kitchen?
It's a full menu as far as Jersey Mike's is concerned, but it, it's a limited member, menu compared with, for example, diners.
It, it, it's a sub shop.
That's actually its name.
Right. And I think if we all live in New Jersey, grew up in New Jersey, we know what a sub shop serves on its menu. And Mr. Stack, have you ever seen smoke emanating from a sub shop?
Yes.
And what would cause that? Other than a fire in the sub shop?
Yeah. The answer is when you cook things on, on the flat grill, there are effluents. There is grease and hot air that rises. And sometimes if the cleaning equipment is not sophisticated, if it's not cleaned regularly, you can see the hot air with particulate matter rising out of the building.
Now, Mr. Stack, with respect to the non-conformities that you detailed, they all exist today.
Well, there's some debate about the three parking spaces that parallel the front right-of-way line, but aside from that, they exist today, yes.
All right. And those non-conformities that you detailed, they would exist tomorrow whether or not this board approves the Jersey Mike's. Is that right?
The, the physical dimensions would continue. That's correct.
And the applicant has in testimony before the board, agreed to limit all deliveries to the front of the store.
That's my recollection.
He's also agreed to limit any grease pickup from the front of the store. Do I understand that's three or four times a year?
I don't know the frequency, but that, that goes to my comment that the smaller amount of parking is on the front of the store. And that means there's just so much more activity where there is a deficient parking supply, which inevitably is going to drive, is either going to be congested in the front or it's going to drive more activity to the rear of the property.
And, and, and the front, the front door to which the, well, let me ask a couple more questions. Is there any customer access to the rear of, rear of the building?
None is proposed.
Any deliveries proposed to the rear of the building?
None are proposed.
And the front of the building, that's the only access for customers and delivery. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
And how far is the front of the store to the residential property line?
It's about a hundred and twenty feet. So even it doesn't comply with a hundred and twenty-five foot setback.
And, and what is the impact on the rear of this building to the residents with respect to, is there any, is there any light in the back that would be any different than any of the retail stores?
No, the, the issue, I mean, you, you should have safety lights at the back entrances. But the answer is there's, there is a different treatment of food-related uses by Milburn.
I understand that and we, we already reviewed that. And the code treats all of them the same.
Well, no, it treats, it treats retail and offices and services different from food-related uses. And it so happens that.
It treats all restaurants the same, is that right?
It, it, it does.
Okay. Mr. Stack, please let me ask the questions.
Sure.
What we have to look at here is what impacts are there from this particular building in this particular location? Are there any windows at the back of the store?
Not, not the building, the particular use in this location.
Are there any windows in the back of the store?
No.
And there's, there's no deliveries proposed at the back of the store for this use?
I believe I already answered that question.
And the only activity in the rear of the store is parking. And that's the same parking as you would have at the other retail uses on the site?
I mean, cars will be parking there much more than exist today. And for example, I would expect occasionally people to eat in their cars there.
And.
And I don't think, since there are no food-related uses in the property today, that does not occur.
I understand that we are proposing a food-related use. So what I'm trying to understand is what difference does it make if someone going to the premises parks in the back that walks in to get their hair done in the salon or walks into the Jersey Mike's to pick up a, a sub?
There, there is a lot, well, first of all, you don't do your hair in the car in the parking lot. You go into the building. And those cars tend to stay for a longer period of time. As the name a fast food restaurant implies, there's a quick turnover. You know, Mr. Keller indicated that, you know, some are, you know, three or four-minute turnarounds. It's, it's a different nature of the use. And all the publications say that it produces more activity than a retailer service use and certainly more than the other uses that are on the property.
And is it your testimony that a more intense use around midday is more detrimental to the residential properties than a use that would be more active first thing in the morning or late at night?
In my opinion, it will, the, the, the ordinance does not make a distinction between times of day. It simply says that.
I'm not asking you that, Mr. Stack. I'm, I'm asking you, you're, you, you were very critical of the fact that Jersey Mike's would be busiest midday. And I'm asking you, a planner, is it your testimony that a use that's busier midday is more impactful on a residential neighborhood? That a use could be active first thing in the morning or late at night?
It can be. Because it, it forces, it, it, it produces a greater parking demand than the other uses. And because this is an unusual property in its shallowness, and because the majority of the parking is, is in the rear, it's going to force a lot more activity, in my opinion, into the rear of the property. Which technically should be a buffer.
And, and, and this is a retail strip center that has always had parking in the rear.
For retail use, correct.
And it just seems to me, Mr. Stack, that there should be some public benefit in filling some of these empty retail storefronts rather than keeping them vacant so that the parking lot is also vacant. I have no further questions of Mr. Stack. I would like to have the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to recall Mr. Keller to respond to some of the comments of Mr. Stack after we hear from any of the others that have comments. Unless you'd like to do that now.
And also, may I, may I speak to my attorney off, offline for a minute?
Why don't you call me, Mark?
Sure.
Is there anyone else who has any questions for Mr. Stack?
I do.
Yes. Mr. Tog.
Would you be able to offer an opinion on any kind of fencing or barrier that could be constructed where that five-foot fence is currently located that would reduce the impact of, you know, higher volume traffic in that parking lot on those neighbors? Whether it be a fence that's particularly higher or some kind of structure that's made out of a material that, you know, bounces sound back? What would be your opinion on a proposal like that?
Probably you would need a highway barrier back there. You know, I'm guessing twenty feet tall. No one wants that. There's supposed to be a green area in the back. A fence, you know, a wood board-on-board fence doesn't block sound. You would have to have a highway sound barrier there that was, you know, tall and potentially might change the, the airflow. And the answer is that would be disastrous, in my opinion, in compared with a green buffer.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question for Mr. Stack also. You, you've heard of noise. Is that, is that the core issue regarding this with your twenty, the twenty-foot wall that obviously you're not proposing? But is it, would noise the issue there that you're complaining about?
A, a twenty-foot wall would probably have an impact both on noise and maybe odors, depending upon how the wind flows. But the, the answer is that's clearly not a solution. No one wants that. And it's, it's a combination of odors, of noise and the, you know, the level of activity there.
Well, how much more noise do you think that that restaurant's going to inflict on the neighbors as opposed to the main thoroughfare that's already there?
We can't change the thoroughfare. And obviously, some of it may be blocked by the building. But the answer is that this will add additional activity. And it's not just at the peak of the noon time. You know, it will be open, if I recall correctly, to nine o'clock at night. So there will be activity there. And again.
Well, it's a retail business. Why wouldn't there be activity there?
Excuse me?
It's a retail business. Why wouldn't?
But there's a different nature to the activity when it's a fast food operation than if. when it's a fast-food operation than if it was a retail store. The, in, in my opinion, because the traffic demand is much greater, and again, there's a phenomenon of people eating in their cars that can't be avoided.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who has a question for Mr. Stack? I have one, Mr. Stack, do you know definitively about the fence? On whose property does that fence exist?
I believe it's on the, I, well, let me look at the survey. The survey, actually, there are, in the, along the rear line, there is a fence that is on Lot 71, according to the survey, and the, the survey does show the wood fence on the subject property, essentially on the property line, or just short of the property line.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other witnesses?
I do have a, someone in the audience with their hand raised, I, I don't know, are we still asking questions of?
Joe just said if they have any questions or if they want to testify.
Okay, I just, it just says J.C., I don't know who he has a question for, so I will bring him over.
Whoever J.C. is, can you identify yourself by name and give your address?
Jared Coletta.
Can you spell your last name slowly?
Last name, please.
And your address, please.
1405 Onofria, O.N.O.F.R.I.A. Drive. That's in Point Pleasant, New Jersey.
Do you have a question of this witness?
Uh, yes.
You gotta ask your question, please.
Sure, just for a full disclosure, I'm, I'm the broker that was handling this transaction, so I just want them to be aware of that, but I missed Mr. Stack's qualifications in the beginning. I'm sure he's been doing this a long time, as have I, so I just have a couple of questions, because I think the biggest issue here is parking. So I guess in your experience, is it more common or less common to have a one-per-35 parking ratio in a retail zone?
For what type of use?
In any highway commercial B2, B3, B1 business zone, is it more common or less common to pay one per 35?
It depends upon the use, municipalities typically have different parking standards for fast-food uses, because they're known to have a greater demand of parking.
Got, but, so you see one per 35 fairly often?
No, it's, it's not as often as it used to be.
Okay.
But it's a recognition that fast-food operations generally produce more traffic than other types of commercial uses.
Got it. Okay. So on that same note, for third-party pickup, I'm not sure how familiar you are with it, I think Mr. Merrick could probably clarify in terms of percentage of business trending that direction. Third-party, I, I do represent a, a number of retail tenants all over the state. Third-party pickup is obviously a huge trend, and the reason for that is it drives efficiency to both the operator
Whoa, 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 you're, you're not testifying right now, you're asking Mr. Stack.
I've just, okay, the question is, do you know how many orders a third-party delivery driver has at any given time?
No.
It's more than one, which would be driving the, the parking at the site down.
I, I, I am aware that before Lyft or DoorDash or the other facility, the other uses appeared, you wouldn't necessarily have people hanging around waiting for a call. It is a phenomenon now that someone that's close to the facility, you know, can get a priority in terms of a customer, so it tends to attract providers, delivery people, that wasn't the case two or three years ago.
Fair, yep. So if they're carrying more than one order, it would technically bring the intensity of the parking down for the use?
It, it, in theory, could do that, at least for that one person.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any questions of Mr. Stack? Either on, either on the board or in the audience? Eileen, anyone else?
No other hands raised, no.
Are there any other witnesses who wish to be heard with respect to the neighbors?
I do have
You're, you're also asking if any of the neighbors want to testify themselves, correct?
Correct.
Jay Morielli has raised his hand, I don't know. I know he's being represented by Mr. Stack.
He's, he's not being represented by Mr. Stack, because Mr. Stack's a planner.
Okay.
He's retained Mr. Stack, but I have a feeling he wants to testify himself.
So I will bring him over. Are we at that point?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so Mr. Morielli, once you come on, I'm going to ask that you be sworn in, and I, I took swearing in away from our court reporter before, I'm going to give it back to him. So can you please raise your right hand to the court report?
That's fine, I'll do it. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give, and tonight's Zoom hearing will be the truth, the whole truth comes by the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, spelling your name, please.
Jay Morielli, M.O.R.R.E.A.L.E. And I am at 1 Carmon Drive, in Short Hills, and I've got some images and videos I'd like to present as part of my evidence.
Can I ask you, is one of your images, Slides 1 and 2, that Mr. Stack had emailed in today?
No, they are not.
Okay. So let's
Let's put something up on the screen, and then we'll march it.
Yeah, so Eileen, can you arrange to let Mr.? Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, and I'm going to try to go into presentation mode.
Well, I, okay, let's, let's just identify this for the record, this is, it looks like, is this a PowerPoint or a PDF presentation?
This is a PowerPoint, well, it's a Google Slides, technically.
You have a PowerPoint presentation, do you know how many slides you have? Well, let's start out by saying it's a PowerPoint
Seventeen, seventeen slides.
Entitled annotated photos, comma, images and videos, 688-700 Morris Turnpike, proposed Jersey Mike's application, all photos taken July 20th through August 15th, 2021, by Jay Morielli, except where noted, and you said seventeen slides, correct?
Correct.
So why don't we mark this right now as exhibit, we're going to call them O1, for objectors 1. And I'm going to ask that you talk with Eileen David tomorrow, decide if she's going to be nice enough to print these out and mark it O1, or if she's going to ask you to print out a hard copy, mark it O1, and send it over to her office. That'll be between the two of you, but at some point tomorrow, we need a hard copy of O1 in the file, okay?
Very good.
All right, so you've been sworn, so go ahead.
Okay, so reference, and I think Mr. Bigos was asking me where I lived relative to property. I've taken this from the site plan, I've circled property number 67. I am 75 feet, and I guess that's four inches from the edge of the property of the Jersey Mikes. And I have a view into the parking lot and a view of the side of the building of the Jersey Mikes. This is an image from Google Maps, and it goes to the point that Mr. Stack was making regarding the size of the proposed spaces in the front of the building. You can see here that the car, and this is a photo from August of 2018, the
By the way, this is Slide 3, I assume, because Slide 1 is your title slide, and Slide 2 was the key map?
Correct. Count the slides for me. And so this is an image from Google Maps, and it shows that the distance between the edge of the parking spots and where the proposed new spots are is very narrow, and the next slide is a picture I took, and in this picture you can see, in fact, a pickup truck is in this space, and the pickup truck extends a good four feet beyond the end of the space, so this is Slide 4. If I go back to Slide 3, and you can imagine, and you can imagine, oops, sorry. You can imagine that same pickup truck parked in the spot behind the car. You can see that it would not have enough room, or barely enough room, to back out, especially if there were cars parked next to it, so this is backing up Mr. Stack's claim that these four additional spots proposed in the front are substandard and would cause problems. On the Slide 5, I wanted to show a picture of the Florham Park Jersey Mikes in the parking lot behind the Jersey Mikes. This lot is much bigger, I estimated it to be 120 spots, maybe more, I did not count them, but visual, from visual inspection, you can see it's a much bigger lot. I couldn't control for time, because this is from Google Maps, but when I visited Jersey Mikes, I did take pictures of the parking lot there.
And that's Slide 6, the pictures of the Jersey Mikes parking lot in Florham Park at 182 Reesdale Avenue?
Correct, on August 4th, 1:24 PM. You can see that the rear lot is pretty much full. I, I would estimate the lot to be at 95% capacity the day I visited. There is a side lot, you can see that lot is fully filled up, and the front lot, you can see cars, and I can tell you that those cars were circling in the lot, looking for parking spaces. So on this particular day, which was the lunch hour, at the Jersey Mikes in Florham Park, the parking lot was full. Going to move on to Slide number 7. This is the Wawa lot, and I'm going to bring up Wawa, I know it is not the same use fully as a Jersey Mike's, but I can say that it does, it is similar, obviously, in location, because it is directly across the street from the Jersey Mikes. I can say that they serve sandwiches, and they're, they are primarily a fast-food takeout restaurant. They serve subs, they serve drinks, they serve chips, very similar. And again, this is Google Maps picture, not mine, but you can see that every spot in the parking lot is full, with the exception of this Tesla's supercharging station.
A quick question, that's an electronic charging station, that's not a petroleum gas station?
The petroleum gas station is in the right top portion of the property, where my cursor is, that's where the gas pumps are. The area to the rear of the lot, on Morris Avenue, not to be confused with Morris Turnpike, these spots are supercharger spots, there's eight of them.
Okay, so what's that structure in the left-hand corner on the lot?
This is their garbage corral.
Okay, got it.
It's a very nice garbage corral as well. This is a picture of the Wawa parking lot, July 27th at 1:15 PM.
Okay, that's Slide 8?
That's Slide 8. You can see that the front lot is full. Linda's Florist, for those familiar with Linda's Florist, is parked on the far end. You can see a woman assisting a pickup truck backing in. In the next slide, you can see an illegally parked contractor. Mr. Stack spoke to the contractors that stop for lunch, eat in their vehicles. You can see on the side lot, another oversized vehicle parked. And on the bottom left, the lot was so full that you can see that there's three non-Teslas parked in the Tesla charging station. This is what happens when
Chairman, I'd, I'd like to just object to relevancy here. I think we all know that there's a big difference between a Wawa and a Jersey Mike's. There really is no relevancy here to what's going on at a Wawa.
I think the board member, I think the board members can differentiate in their minds between the two. I'll permit the, the testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the rear of the lot, you can see all the spots are taken, and again, more vehicles from contractors, which are a heavy user of fast-food restaurants. In the rear of the building, well, not in the rear, there are four trash receptacles on each corner of the building. These trash receptacles are for patrons to put their trash in after they've eaten their lunch. Fast-food restaurants bring patrons that eat lunch in their cars. You can see it in the top right, there's a family. You can see a gentleman on the side, you can see a gentleman putting trash after having eaten lunch into the trash receptacle, and there's four of these, Wawa serves fast-food takeout, it serves subs, and this is how people eat, and where they eat, and what they do with their trash.
Slide, that's Slide 9, right, that was Slide 9?
That was 9, correct.
This is 10 now, correct?
This is 10. And again, contractors coming out with lunch, and this is at 1:05, I didn't have a picture of when they got there. I got to the lot around 1 o'clock, the truck was there, I saw the gentleman come out at 1:05, and then at 1:25, they departed. So the statement that people don't eat in their cars at fast-food restaurants that was made in the first presentation is, is clearly not the case. And some more gentlemen that came for lunch, parked in the east driveway and had lunch, and moved along after that.
And this is, that was Slide 11, correct?
That is correct. Okay, I'm going to skip ahead a few slides in the interest of time. This is Slide
12?
Slide 15 at this point, so I've skipped a couple.
Okay.
And this is the rear of the property where the Jersey Mike's is proposed. In the rear, on the top left, you can see a display case that's been there for, well, I'll let Mr. Bigos talk about how long it's been there, I don't know exactly. You can see rotting, decaying wood, what appears to be a ramp in the middle, you can see a table that's been there and is decaying. You can see cleaning products to the, behind the bow hole. You can see a wall that clearly has not been painted in a period of time. With regard to the fence in the rear of the property.
And I'm sorry, but this is Slide 16, I just want, I want a good record here, Slide 16.
I apologize, Slide 16. There's a picture of a fence panel just leaning up against the fence, there are missing slats in the fence. There is a parking stall block that's been overturned. On the bottom, you can see waste in the trash bins, I did not close the trash bins, I left them open. You can see a mix of recyclables and non-recyclables. You can see trash that just is not being tended to. And then finally, I'd like to show the parking lot cleaners in a short video.
Slide 17 is a video?
Correct. And that was taken from my backyard. So not only was the trash blowing into properties of my neighbors, but the sound was clearly audible from my backyard, which is seventy-five feet away. And that concludes the presentation.
Any other testimony? Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'd like to just close by saying that because of the issues of noise, because of the issues of odors, because of the issues of trash, there will be no trash receptacles, my understanding, behind the Jersey Mikes. Customers may litter, leaf blowers will come and blow that into the yards. And because getting problems resolved can sometimes be very onerous. For all of those reasons, I oppose this application. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any cross-examination of this witness?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll be very brief. Mr. Morielli, when you went to the Jersey Mikes in Florham Park, that was shortly after they opened the new store?
I was not, I am not aware of the date that the store was open, but Mr. Meyer did testify to that.
You were aware of the size of that store?
Greg, sorry, two quick comments. It opened July fifteenth. There's three other restaurant uses in that center, forty-five hundred square foot Forum Park Diner that has been there for thirty-five years and Playables, two thousand square foot Playables, and then it's Greek to me, Greek restaurant, also going at two thousand square feet.
So there's four different food uses there?
Yes.
And the size of the Jersey bikes there is quite a bit larger than what's proposed here?
Two thousand square feet versus this fourteen hundred square feet. Sorry, twelve hundred square feet, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moriella, the Wawa, that's a convenience store, right?
It is a gas station. It has some convenience stores during the lunch hour. It is primarily a takeout food shop.
And how large is that Wawa?
I have no idea.
Would you venture to guess it's quite a bit larger than the Jersey Mikes that's proposed here?
I would, I don't know, but it would not surprise me.
And the video it took of the folks blowing the leaves behind the.
No, that was not leaves, sir. That was, that was trash. That was paper cups. That was napkins. That was, those were not leaves. They were leaf blowers. But I can play the video again and show that that is not leaves.
And that occurred without Jersey Mikes being open there?
It did indeed.
And you were present last month with Mr. Meyer testifying that they generally police their grounds?
He did say that, yes.
And he is the franchisee of the proposed facility?
That is my understanding.
Thank you. I have no further questions of Mr. Morielli, Mr. Chairman. But I would like to recall Mr. Keller very briefly before we conclude this evening.
Let's continue with questions for Mr. Morial. Mr. Togger.
Yeah, Mr. Morial, thank you for your presentation. I would like to propose a similar question to you in terms of, do you believe that there would be some kind of barricade or fencing or some kind of barrier that could be installed that could alleviate the issues related to increased traffic and noise?
Sure, I would love to see the buffer area filled in with landscaping as is required by the ordinance. I would, that would be fantastic.
And do you think that would alleviate some of the concerns of the neighbors?
I think a barrier of, what was it, thirty-eight feet or so of landscape property would be a great help.
Sir, I'm not, I'm not talking about thirty-eight feet. I'm talking about something that would, you know, replace that broken down fence that you demonstrated in your.
Just replacing the fence and whatever that is, the two-foot area, the width of the fence? I don't, going back to Mr. Steck's comments, I don't see how that would stop odors. I don't see how that would stop noise. And I don't see how that would stop trash from blowing in to the properties.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Morial? Any other cross-examination of Mr. Morial? Is there anyone else who would like to testify on behalf of the abductors?
I do have two hands raised.
Let's bring one in.
Okay, I'll choose Sahin. I don't have a hand, I apologize. Actually, now three.
So can you please pronounce your name for us?
My name is Altuk Sahin.
And your address, please?
My address is three Canterbury Lane, Short Hills.
Where is your property, where is your property in relationship to the property that is before the board?
My property is right behind the proposed property, forty-three feet away from the property, right behind it.
Can we have our court reporter swear him in first, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Sir, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear from the testimony about to given tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, false truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
I just need you to state your name and address again for the record.
My name is Altuk Sahin. I live at three Canterbury Lane, Short Hills.
Thank you.
What would you like to testify to, sir?
I would like to just make a short comment and I would like to say that I would like, I request the board reject this application for all the concerns that we heard just before us. I'm very concerned about these, all these concerns. My property is only forty-four feet away from the building. It's not a hundred and twenty.
Hold on one second. Someone has a dog barking in the background. Unless it's Sahin, is that you?
I'm sorry, let me close the door. I'm so sorry.
Can you close your door, please? Because we can't ask you to unmute yourself or you won't be able to hear what you said.
And we're not sure what the dog was saying either.
We don't know if the dog is in favor or against the application.
That's right.
Yeah, what I was, I was saying is, yeah, my property is only forty-four feet away from this building. Yes, this is, you heard all that. I don't want to repeat the same things. This is clearly not an appropriate site for food businesses because of all the hurt, all the things you heard from the experts. So, you know, noise, traffic, trash, odors, they all concern me. I really don't want my, you know, our life and our families, like, well, being here effectively, any kind of business with this disclosed proximity of the building. So granting this variance, I believe, is going to really cause detriment to my property and my family and also to my neighbors. So just, I would like to second the rejection of the application. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Mr. Meese, do you have any questions for this witness?
No, sir, I don't. No questions.
Anyone else who would like to speak?
David Honeysett has a question or as a comment.
Can you bring him in, please?
He's in.
Get your, unmute yourself and let us see you. Can you get your video on, please?
Hello?
There we go. Can we have the court reporter swear him in, please?
Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, false truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, spelling your name, please.
David Honeysett, H O N E Y S E T T. I reside at ninety-two Meadow Brook Road in Short Hills, Jersey.
Can you tell the board where your property is in relationship to the property that's before this board?
I live approximately two blocks from Jay Morielli, Mike Shepherd, Tug, who just spoke. And we've been speaking about these issues that are impacting all of us that live in these similar districts with restaurants that are being put in.
Fine. What would you like to say, sir?
Well, I'd just like to, full disclosure, I am in the restaurant business and I have been for the last three and a half decades or three decades, operating in cities all over the country and in one other country. So I just want to say, state that, I mean, I've seen this site and I've walked the site. And I did speak at the last zoning board meeting when we were discussing the issues of this facility. And I don't understand why a restaurant would want to go into this space. There's a lot of hardships in this space. The garbage needs to be carried a hundred feet to be deposited in a new dumpster outside the back door. All delivery grease extraction are going to be coming through the front entrance of the building. And in terms of residents, the impacts that are going to affect residents, these are real. I'm in this business and I know that noise and odor are significant impacts and detriments to people that reside close to restaurants. Even the most efficiently run restaurants are going to have some sort of detriment to residents that are around them. And I just don't see how it makes sense to put a restaurant in this specific location. The parking issues, the parking issues are one issue, the odors. It seems like the facility itself, the perimeter of the facility is not maintained. It seems like there's already existing issues there, which are just going to be exacerbated by the addition of a food service establishment there. And I'm just opposed to approving this application.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Meese, do you have any questions for this witness?
No questions.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to ask any questions of this witness?
I brought over Mike Shepherd, who has a comment.
Mr. Shepherd, let's get you sworn in, please.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, false truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, spelling your name, please.
Michael Shepherd, M I C H A E L, S H E P H E R D, seven Canterbury Lane, Short Hills.
Can you tell us where your property is in connection with the, in relation, I should say, to the property that's before the board?
Yep, my property is adjacent to the property in question, next to Altun's property who previously spoke.
What would you like to say, sir?
Back up to this property?
I'm sorry?
Is your backyard, is your backyard adjacent to the backyard of the property?
Yes.
Proceed, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts. I speak in opposition to this application and ask the board to reject this application tonight. The application is put forward, seeks three variances. Obviously, two of those variances are in question. And from where I sit as an adjacent property owner, I believe that approving this application will cause real detriment to my property and my family's quality of life. The applicant obviously seeks this variance and I won't belabor what's already been discussed, but it seeks a variance to the, to allow a fast food restaurant within a hundred and twenty-five feet of my residential property and my neighbors' properties. I'd like to just underscore a key point in this that I think is significant and that this building is forty-three feet from residential properties, including mine. This is not a hundred and fifteen feet. This is not fifty feet even. It also, as Mr. Steck has testified, does not meet the setback requirements. And there is no buffer area. The buffer area effectively is the parking for customers at this lot. And I think that proximity of forty-three feet really amplifies all of the negative impacts that Mr. Speck spoke to, as well as several of my neighbors. It is my contention that this food use will present negative impacts that frankly, the current retail uses do not. Noise will be one. You will have patrons invariably eating in and around their cars at the rear of the property. Their windows will be down in some cases, playing car radio, playing music, and there will be noise and exhaust from those cars idling. That's just our reality of a food use. Trash will invariably increase at this property as more cars are parked in the rear of the property. And there will be food waste that there is not today in terms of the current use cases at the property. This will in turn increase the real potential for rodents and other pests in and around my property and my neighbors' properties. And then smells and odors has been talked about quite a bit tonight as well. This will be a food use and it will invariably, with the kitchen, create certain odorous emissions that my backyard and my property will be exposed to. I think the consolidated trash receptacle as proposed, just to remind the board, it's being proposed on the side near the rear of the property, on the front of the property. I believe this will increase noise, odors, waste and pet issues for myself and other residents in the rear now that food will be in this receptacle. But I think what makes this application particularly problematic from where I sit, at least, is that really the second various variance around parking. I think it's been made plain that this site does not have the parking required for the proposed use. And not having that parking is unto itself problematic. I think it has, just that reality has potential to create issues relative to bottlenecks, cars idling, cars double parking throughout the rear of the building. I think on top of that, though, and what makes this insufficient parking particularly problematic at this site is what Mr. Steck highlighted in terms of it being the preponderance of parking being located in the rear of the property. And just to be clear on this point, we're not talking about the back of the building. We're talking about being right against the property line, against the fence that connects my backyard and my neighbor's backyards to this property. So not only is there no required buffer at this location, the parked cars are effectively the buffer area. You have cars within feet of residential backyards. So in closing, I'll keep it brief. I think approving a variance to both a hundred and twenty-five foot requirement for this property as well as a variance to the parking requirements will do real harm to my family's quality of life due to the impacts that fast food use will bring to this location. Noise, odors, trash, pests. And it will do similar harm to the adjacent neighbors that are also within a hundred and twenty-five feet, several of which have spoken tonight and expressed similar sentiment. And so I asked the board to enforce the ordinances as they're written and reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Meese, do you have any cross-examination of this?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone else in the audience or on the board who has any questions for this witness, Mr. Shepherd? I see none and I hear none.
All right, I have four more people who have comments. I am bringing over Patricia Morielli.
Why don't you unmute yourself?
Hello.
Turns her video on. I'm going to ask that the court reporter swear her in.
Hello.
All right, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, false truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address for record, spelling your name, please.
Patricia Morielli, M O R R E A L E, one Clermont Drive, Short Hills.
And your property is, how related to the property that's before the board? And your property is, and how related to the property that's before the board?
Yes, my property is 1 Claremont Drive and I have a visual. I look at the rear of the property in question where the application is, and I also look at the side. My husband Jay presented a schematic of exactly where we are, but I have a full side view of the potential Jersey mics and the full rear looking down the distance of the rear of the property.
And you would like to say what tonight?
Yes. So my concerns are, as has been voiced, obviously, the noise, noise, the odors, the waste and the parking. Fundamentally, this is not the spot for a restaurant. This is not the spot for a fast food establishment such as the one applied for. I am very concerned about the noise and the parking volume. Specifically, we are next to the parking lot. As Mr. Shepherd pointed out, we will hear conversations in the cars, we will hear conversations of the patrons. This is audible noise that will be very disruptive to the residential nature of our neighborhood. I implore the committee to please reject this application as put forth to you today.
Thank you. Mr. Mees, do you have any cross-examination of this witness?
No questions.
Is there anyone in the audience or on the board who has any questions of this witness? Eileen, you have somebody else who would like to speak?
Yes, I have four more people.
Four more?
Yep. I am bringing over Ted.
Once Ted unmutes and he puts his video on, we will ask him to be sworn in. But first, Ted, what is your last name and can you spell it, please?
It's Drew, it's D H U. Z as in zebra, H as in.
Z H U.
That's right.
Okay. Can you swear him in, please? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimony about to give, and tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name and your address for the record.
Name is Ted Drew, the address is 3 Claremont Drive, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Did you say 3 Claremont Drive?
That's right, 3 Claremont Drive.
Where is your property in relation to the property that is before the board?
So my property is in between Alton and Jay's properties, like who just spoke, and it is lot 68 in the, in the chart, which is on the top right corner, about 30 feet to the, to the sighting question.
And you would like to give the following testimony. Proceed.
So I want to echo my neighbor's concerns related to odor, waste, noise protection. In addition to all the issues that could potentially be caused by parking and ask the committee to reject this application. With all the odor, waste, noise protection, this change will degrade the quality of life for me and my neighbors, of which many families, including my own, are raising children in this area. So I ask the committee to hear our concerns and reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mees, do you have any cross-examination?
No, no questions.
Is there anyone in the audience or on the board who has any questions of this witness? If not, Eileen, the next witness?
Next witness is Arlene Gennella.
Arlene Gennella.
Have her sworn once she unmutes and turns her video on.
Arlene Gennella, you have to unmute and put your video on.
On your screen, it's going to be in the lower left-hand corner. There we go.
Hold on, there we go. Sorry.
Okay. You just raise your right hand, please.
It is.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
I do.
Your name and your address for the record, spelling your name, please.
Arlene Gennella. I live at 2 Bishop's Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. I, I also own a property with my son at 11 Pine Terrace West in Short Hills, which is in the neighborhood, the Glenwood neighborhood that is adversely impacted by the Jersey Mike's application. And I'm opposed to it, A, because I'm, I'm also, I'm a taxpayer that lives there. But I also feel, as a Realtor, I've been a Realtor here for 36 years, that it adversely impacts the neighborhood of Glenwood that we all love. I, I, I think it's great to have definitely more development, but just not this use. It's the food use that everyone is objecting to. It's not the use of having the property used. Certainly, the owner, the taxpayer of that property is entitled to get some revenue, but just not this use is what's just not suitable and what the residents are objecting to. So.
Thank you, Mrs. Ginnella. Thank you. Mr. Mees, any questions for this witness?
Yes, just one question. Would a convenience store at this location be objectionable?
Are you speaking to me, sir?
Yes.
A convenience store, a convenience store that doesn't have any cooking facilities?
A, a typical convenience store. Under, under the ordinance, a convenience store is permitted use in this location and it could sell food if that was an incidental part of its business. I'm just wondering if that would be objectionable to you.
Well, I find, you know, the fact that it's, it just has such limited space relative to other settings, I think. I mean, well, that's not what, you know, you're, you're speaking theoretically, right? The application that I'm objecting to and other people have raised objections to is because it's the food as well as the increased traffic because of the nature of that business. There are other businesses that could be very suitable, such as another, another cell phone store, another mattress store. Even any sort of like the liquor store that's further, further down or that was further down. Now it's a, now it's a a doctor. Now it's a one of the many, many sites. Something like that would be fine, but it's, it's the cooking. That's, it's the odor that would be coming from that and attracting rodents, which is very undesirable for everybody who's living there, surrounding those properties.
So be okay if that was a, a use that was incidental in a convenience store, but it's not okay if it's a standalone sub shop in a strip mall?
Again, it's because a sub shop involves cooking, it involves food, it involves rodents. I find it objectionable.
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on, is there anyone else on the board or in the audience who has any questions for Ms. Ginnella? If not, Eileen, is there someone else out there?
I am bringing over Davood Tari. And then there is one other person who still has a question.
Thank you, Ms. Ginnella. Is this Davood Tari?
Yes.
There we go. Can you please swear him in? Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, spelling your name.
The first name is Davood, D A V O O D, last name Tari, T A R E E. The address is 9 Canterbury Lane.
Okay. And the chairman has been asking, where is your property in relation to the subject property?
It's adjacent to the property. It's my backyard is the parking of the property.
Is it based into the proposed parking? Is that correct?
Very close. I'm next to Mr. Shepherd.
Your, your rear yard backs up to the rear yard of the property in question, correct?
Yes.
And what would you like to say, Mr. Tari?
Well, I believe our other neighbors said it excellently, Mr. Morielli, Mr. Shepherd. This kind of business is going to create a lot of problems for residents like me. Obviously, it's a noise issue, odor issue, and also trash removal. You, you don't know, I have been living here for some times. When this garbage disposal truck are coming, they come anytime they want. So when we have more activities like food business, I'm sure they will be coming more often and they're going to add more to our existing problems. And of course, odor and noise and these landscape events are blowing, all of this, as Mr. Morielli showed in the short video. We are really impacted and it's not fair to taxpayer like me that we are paying the same tax rate that other Short Hill residents, but then we are exposed to all kinds of problems as has been mentioned this evening. So I oppose, I oppose to the, to the property at hand and to, to the business that is in the question and I ask board to reject the application.
Thank you, Mr. Mees.
No questions.
Is there anyone in the audience or on the board who has any questions to Mr. Tari? I hear none, I see none. Eileen, you want to bring in the last person?
I have brought in Ameed.
Hey folks, I have an emergency. I have to go.
I'm sorry, who said that?
Craig has an emergency. He had to leave the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay, can Ameed please unmute and put her, use her, her video on?
Hello, can you, folks, hear me?
Yes, sorry. Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, spelling your first and last name, please.
Yeah, my name is Amit Mahale, A M I T, last name is Mahale, M A H A L E. I reside at 16 Claremont Drive in Short Hills.
What would you like to say about this case?
So I am in a part of this neighborhood. I'm about less than a block away. I can't exactly tell you how far I am at. My property does not back the proposed, the, the proposed property here with the, with the ordinance, but I, I am a part of the neighborhood and I know a lot of these families personally. I, I strongly oppose this ordinance. I feel that this, the facts have been presented by, by experts here. So I won't take too much time talking about the facts and why it's detrimental to this community. But I feel this community is made of, made of such wonderful people and I feel a lot of young families as well. And I, I, I think this ordinance affects the quality of life for people and ends this kind of detrimental to, to this wonderful community, which I'm a part of. So I strongly oppose this ordinance.
Mr. Ameed, I just want to point out to you that we're not dealing here with an ordinance. We're dealing here with an application for variances.
Absolutely.
That's what this board.
Yeah, pardon me for that. Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone, Mr. Mees, do you have questions to this witness?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone on the board or in the audience who has any questions for Ameed? All right, now.
I have one more. Wait, wait, there's one more person. Jean Pasternak has a comment.
Okay.
Hi.
Just, hold on, just wait, wait. Raise your right hand, please.
Sure.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record.
Jean Pasternak, P A S T E R N A K, 342 Hobart Avenue, Short Hills. My property is probably a mile away or less. I am not immediately adjacent, but I would like to concur with every single one of my neighbors who have spoken in opposition to this application. Although they live more immediately adjacent to the proposed site for the sub shop, the issues they've raised and Mr. Steck has raised affect all of us, particularly in the Glenwood area, but also other adjacent areas of Short Hills and Milburn. We regularly use the businesses as well as the roadway on Morris Turnpike. I've lived here 20, almost 25 years. I go there almost every day to either shop. We're trans, transverse there to go somewhere else. As the types of businesses have changed over the past 20 years, I have to say I've witnessed and known many residents, including my own family, who have had either close calls or accidents along that very particular stretch where the ingress and egress of that property where this sub shop would be. I remember visiting a friend of mine who got into a very serious accident just steps from that exit of that property. And she was in the hospital for quite a long time, having been completely smashed from the side. And so I just am very nervous about the increase in the, the, the quantity of traffic, given the number of developments that are coming into the community that have already come in. And also the additional businesses that are right there in that same area. I feel I've had to be much more vigilant in driving in that area. And I feel that that's something that we haven't really talked about, but I can tell you, I feel it, it's palpable. The other issue I wanted to say is the quality of life, our property values, the safety of residents and residents' needs in general versus the commercial property owner's desire to bring new businesses that we all like to have as well. Needs, needs to be balanced with this increased density coming from the affordable housing developments and also resulting in the increased number of residents and people who are passing through, visitors, et cetera, who will be utilizing these very businesses in that B2 area on Morris Turnpike. I think the balance is tipping too much in favor of the commercial property owners, in my opinion. And I just hope that this board will hear us as residents. I feel often our voices are not heard and I, I really hope that you will hear us tonight. Please preserve our exceptional quality of life here in Milburn, Short Hills, that we've all been so blessed to have. And I hope you'll reject this application. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mees, do you have any questions of this witness?
No questions.
Does anyone on the board or in the audience have any questions of Ms. Pasternak? But if not, I will close the hearing, the public portion of the hearing and board members. Now, this is an opportunity, if you desire to speak to the issues, you may do so at this time.
Chairman.
But I do, I do want to tell, yes.
I believe that Mr. Mees had requested the opportunity to recall Mr. Keller as rebuttal witness. You might want to ask him if he still wants to do that.
Very briefly, yes.
Be pleased to.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drell. I had forgotten that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Keller, you're still under oath from earlier. You heard Mr. Steck's testimony this evening and he discussed the non-conforming conditions of the property. Are any of those non-conforming conditions going to go away whether or not the board approves or denies the application that's before them tonight? Approves or denies the application that's before them tonight?
No, on the buffer, uh, the buffer requirement applies to all commercial uh uses next to a residential zone. Um, so, and that's one that actually the King's Lot does not comply with either. Uh, that's the standard, so that's not going to go away either. We, all of these properties, in fact. The building that's right behind Mr. Mori Ali's, the uh tire service, that's probably less than five feet off the back of the building. Unfortunately, those buffers don't exist. In the past, it was deemed that a six-foot fence would be adequate and that's what was enforced. Uh, I do recognize we have a a fence that uh is just under five feet sitting on a fourteen-inch curb and there's a, there's a. Backside, so it's about a six foot. Um, I would have to believe that the applicant would be happy to put up a larger fence. A taller fence to to mitigate, to make sure that that's in better shape. Um, I have to believe that uh, first of all, all of the deficiencies, and I'm not sure. Um, I know I was distributed a two-sheet set from Mr. Steck earlier today. Was that made part of this application or not?
No, that was not, that has not been submitted into evidence, so if I were you, I wouldn't mention it.
I'm not going to. Um, so I don't need to rebut any of that, but I do want to, I did want to uh basically get into the fact that. Uh, it is again, an existing building.
Mr. Keller, just before you, before you get get on, Mr. Steck indicated that most of the parking is in the rear of the site. Uh, is that accurate?
Actually, it is not accurate. There are nineteen spaces striped in the back of the lot. And I would point out in response to Mr. Mori Ali's question before, there are actually two hundred and eighty-four spaces in the adjoining Panera lot. Of which twenty-eight spaces are actually behind the lot and aerial photography suggests that they are used almost every day. And there's also a uh trash compactor behind that building in close range uh. In close proximity to the residence on uh Birchwood. And I would also point out in terms of real estate values, uh, one of the houses contiguous to the back of the uh. Of the Panera property was just sold in three days for over near a million dollars, so I don't.
Mr. Keller, Mr. Keller, Mr. Keller, you're going way too fast.
I do that sometimes.
I lost you at, there's nineteen spaces in the rear of the building.
Okay, there are nineteen.
Spaces in the rear of which building?
Are nineteen spaces in the rear of the subject property six eighty-eight, seven hundred with a proposed.
How many spaces are in the front of the building?
Well, you've got, um, there are four on the side. And there are eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen. There are twenty spaces in the front. Um, again, four of which um are parallel and they existed historically. I would posit uh that though, even if we remove those spaces.
Mr. Keller, I'm just asking, your your testimony is there's nineteen spaces in the rear and twenty spaces in the front, correct?
Sixteen, twenty in the front.
Okay, I just wanted to get the facts straight, that's all.
Four on the sides. For a total of forty-three spaces.
Okay, thanks. Now, everything else you said, if you want. The board to hear any of it, you have to say it slowly.
I've been, I've been drinking iced coffee the whole time, I apologize. The um, so one of, one of the things I wanted to ask her, ask, answer Mr. Mori Ali regarding the, the property um. At uh seven twenty. Morris and Essex Turnpike where the. Uh, Panera Bread is located. The Panera Bread is located in a much larger mall. And yes, most of the parking is in the front of that building. However, there are two hundred and eighty-four spaces approximately, of which twenty-eight. Are behind the building. Uh, in close proximity to the residence. They are used almost, they're, they're almost always fifty to seventy percent full. On review of aerial photography over the last five years. And that behind that property, there is also a trash compactor. Um, that sits against the back of the building, that building being about fifty feet from the uh. Uh, about just under fifty feet to the back of those residences that run on Birchwood. So there is some, that, while our property is not as big. As the Panera site, uh, there is parking behind, it is regularly used and there are uh. It's active, as indicated, all of these properties in the B three and B two zone, we're being in B two zone. Um, none of them meet the buffer requirements. We can't, so these are a number of the. Um, site parameters that Mr. Steck brought up. Uh, they go at the site, they're historic. Um, no matter what successful use went into this site, uh, they would be, they could be using those, those spaces in the back of the property. Um, and clearly, the um, it's not been our practice. Um, when we work with developed sites to re-stripe them to meet current standards, the immediate site next door, which was the urgent care.
Mr. Keller, be be before you, before you get to that, well, you're still under Panera Bread.
Yep.
Um, in fact, Panera Bread went before this same board for a very similar various relief, is that not right?
Yeah, they, they went back before this board in October of two thousand, except that they had uh. Nearly had more than double, more than three times the space and they had a hundred and twenty seats versus uh fourteen seats. So a much larger operation.
And they, they also received the conditional use variance for being too close to the residential zone line?
It's the same, it's the same ordinance that we're under tonight, so they receive.
They also receive, also receive the variance for the number of parking spaces on the site.
Uh, that I don't recall, but that's possible.
All right. Um, and and their use is. Similar to the Jersey Mike's, albeit quite a bit larger, both in terms of square footage and as seats, as you had just mentioned, right?
They are, in fact, in reading through the resolution, um, in support of their variances, it's very similar to to our building. In fact. Um, that one was similar in that there was no existing or proposed windows or signs at the back of the building. Uh, all the customer activity was biased to the front of the building. Um, the building operations with respect to the um. Uh, proposed sub shop really aren't different than any retail establishment. Um, and that, that site also had a fence that was pretty much on the property and there was additional buffering provided by the neighbor. So it is somewhat analogous to that uh approval and similar to um. That application, you know, they're, all, all restaurants are not created equal. We have one ordinance that fits all food uses. And and when you look at the fact that all food uses are not created equal, this we felt was pretty much the most benign type, as you indicated. We know what shops are like. We know that um, they're generally going to uh, they're generally going, they will, they will involve food. Which is why we moved the dumpsters over to the west side of the building. Modern dumpsters can be sealed. Um, they can be made to be rodent proof. Obviously, it does take some policing to make sure they're closed properly. Uh, and this applicant would be willing to do that. With regard to odor, this is not a Burnett barbecue. This is not a Nenzio's barbecue where we have an open pit flame charcoal. Um, barbecue going on and getting all kinds of odors. This is a fairly benign operation with a flat top grill. The um, the, with regard to the. Um, parking, I I did sort of, um, I took a little exception, uh. Say that the I T E is outdated. It's true, but it's certainly more current than the, than the old thinking that. Uh, fast food restaurants required one space per thirty-five. The fact that they're at one per sixty-six or one per sixty, I think it still reflects a more current uh attitude. And I'd like to know if if Mr., you know, Mr. Steck said he was asserting that he thinks that the numbers have gone back up. But there was no evidence of that and I, and I haven't seen any evidence because I keep looking for evidence of what's happened post-pandemic or what's. What's happening with Uber and ride shares and we haven't seen it. So the hunch that those numbers may be higher than the old I T E. I think is um, it's unsubstantiated and unsupported. The um, I think that the parking.
I'm going to interrupt here.
Yep.
Mr. Mies, Mr. Keller is doing a summation which is basically. Uh, attacking every aspect of the applicant's application. I think you asked him a very simple question, did you not?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, he's almost done. Um, I asked him to respond to Mr. Steck. And I think Mr. Steck went off on a couple of things that that just were not based in fact, as Mr. Keller is pointing out. Both in terms of his review of the subject property, as well of his citations to various references. And I think it was important for the board to hear that uh from Mr. Keller.
And basically, Joe, that, that was the end of my um, really responding to Mr. Steck's comments. I think that uh, the applicant has indicated they're willing to put conditions on. I know we can find some conditions that would make this acceptable. Uh, and a good tenant, we think it's a good neighbor, we think it's a good landlord. Um, and we'd be more than happy to entertain uh any conditions that would uh, would uh make it a better comfort zone.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience or whoever has anything to say about this matter? If not. I'll close the public portion of the meeting.
Okay, did you, I, I thought you had already closed it. Um, I, I see Peter Steck has his hand raised. I was, so I, I thought you had already closed the public portion.
Yeah, we've, we've, I've closed the public portion of the meeting.
Right, the public portion is closed, but because Mr. Keller has testified in rebuttal, I think that. Unfortunately, it's made, it got a little longer, but members of the public are entitled to cross-examine him only on what he just testified to.
Okay. Then I will bring Mr. Steck back over.
Well, Mr. Steck, Mr. Steck testified as an expert. In my opinion, Mr. Steck is not entitled to cross-examine another expert.
Okay.
I already.
I do have a question from Anne Marie Shepherd.
Is there anyone who has any questions for Mr. Keller? Excuse me. For Mr. Keller, based on what he just said.
I have one um resident with her hand raised, Anne Marie Shepherd.
Bring her over and we'll make it clear that she's going to be. Ask Mr. Keller questions based on what he just said, and that's all.
So, um, again, Ms. Shepherd, can you please, for the record, I give you your address. You're not testifying, you're just asking questions. What's your address?
Uh, seven Canterbury Lane.
Do you have a question for Mr. Keller on what he just testified to?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because I wanted to um. Clarify, you know, I understand what the residence is behind Panera and. The proximity to the um back of the building versus those residences, but. I do want to emphasize that the, there is a difference between the end of our property, our actual house.
I hate to interrupt you, but you're being asked now if you have any questions for Mr. Keller. Based on what he just testified to.
Right, you, you can't testify, you, you can't refute what he said, you can ask him questions about what he said.
Okay, um, is the distance between the end of the house and the Panera property? Similar to the end of the houses and the property of question for Jersey Mike's um equitable or the same?
Yeah, actually, it is. I can give you the exact dimension of the house. To the back of the building. Um, that's actually the back of the building. So the building itself is. About forty-five. Feet plus or minus, uh, forty-six feet off of the back of the building. And the closest house there is sixty-two to sixty-four feet. Your house is right behind our subject property. And that distance there from the, you have a back bump on the, on the back of your house. Um, that distance there is. Approximately fifty-nine to sixty feet, so they're fairly analogous.
Yeah, I, I feel like our, it just seems like our backyards are smaller, so from our bedrooms, we could really hear people talking at normal levels when they're parking their cars in, in the back there. Which it seems like is different.
We're not asking for more testimonials at this point.
Just a question, any other questions for Mr. Keller?
I'm done.
All right, I have um. Uh, Jean Pasternak and Jay Mori Ali, who both have questions.
Bring in Jean Pasternak. But we want to make it clear now that we're asking questions of Mr. Keller only based on what he just testified to.
Go ahead, Ms. Pasternak, we, we know where you live.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, um, we said that go ahead, ask your questions of Mr. Keller, just based on what he testified to.
I understand, I'm sorry I couldn't hear. Um, I would like to ask Mr. Keller, I have four questions. Um. Is it true that Panera is a primarily dine-in restaurant versus the Jersey Mike's subs that has no dine-in option?
I don't know the answer to that. I know that they have many more seats, but I think there's a fair amount of takeout and DoorDash, et cetera, so I don't know the. Split between them, but I do think that.
Mr. Keller, Mr. Keller, he said, do you, do you know? Once you say, I don't know, that's it.
Uh, Mr. Keller, could you tell me what you meant by a benign restaurant operation?
I think as I indicated, I, I, I said this is more benign than most because there are certain restaurants that I don't think. Um, as I said, if you go to uh Springfield Avenue and you go to um. Nenzio's barbecue, or you go to Burnett barbecue, or you go to the old Church's Fried Chicken, um, in those areas. Those generate a lot more smells and odors, et cetera. This is also not a, um, it's not a sports bar, it's not, it doesn't have uh dancing, it doesn't have music, it doesn't have. Um, it, it doesn't have uh any form of entertainment. And so, uh, it also doesn't open at six A M uh like the Panera does and it's closed at a fairly early hour, it's not open until eleven o'clock. So I think in terms of uh the variety of di- of different types of food uses you can get, this one would have, this one would be less impactful to the neighborhood. The odors will be less impactful because of the nature of the cooking that goes on than many other types of restaurants that. That uh we see within the community and within the area.
Mr. Pasternak, your next question?
The next question is, could you define then what you meant by what is a good neighbor and a good landlord? What did you mean by that?
Well, I think, um, I think both, um. I would imagine Mr. Vigos uh was as surprised as I was to see how irresponsible the, the lawn guys or the, the maintenance guys were at blowing trash around the backyard. Uh, I think for the most part, uh, of many of the commercial Realtors that I've dealt with. Um, Mark has been more hands-on and yes, you can't keep uh after everyone and things do get dropped off at the back of buildings and it takes. A week or two to get them carted away, but for the most part, uh, Mark has taken pride in this retail center. He's fixed up the front to be very attractive. Uh, redid the sidewalks and so, um, a- as far as having seen many different types of landlords, I think he is uh more hands-on. I think that uh Jersey Mike's, the testimony um from the operator, is that they will continue to be hands-on. And so I think that uh, as indicated, I think you have a potential good neighbor here. Um, we're taking all those dumpsters that float around the back, we're moving them over to the side, to the benefit to the community and the benefit to the property. I think that's, um, it is, uh, I think of all the possible, I, I've seen the back of other commercial properties throughout the downtown for years. And why, and they're in close proximity to residencies and this is certainly um, uh, better than most.
Mrs. Pasternak, what's your third question? Yours, your music, Mrs. Pasternak.
No, I, I'm sorry, th- those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Steinberg.
You're welcome. Okay, I'm going to close the public.
I have one more, I have Jay Mori Ali.
Jay Mori Ali, he's the last one.
Mori Ali, yes.
Hi again, I just want to clarify the parking spots that.
Where, where you're, you're now, you're now limited to asking questions of Mr. Keller based on what he just testified to.
Yes, sir, I understand that, thank you. Uh, Mr. Keller, you testified on the parking spaces in front. Uh, are you counting the four? Um, I don't know what we want to call them disputed parking spaces in your.
He testified there were sixteen plus the four to get to twenty, that was his testimony, correct, Mr. Keller? Mr. Keller, you have to answer orally, yes?
There were uh nineteen in the, there's twenty, yes, correct.
And so you're counting the additional four, thank you, uh, and there's nineteen in the rear.
Thank you.
So if, if, if you don't count the four substandard spots, there are in fact more in the rear than in the front.
There would be nineteen versus, well, in the You've got the four on the side, so you've got
So, so the four are neither in the front nor in the rear, just going back to the point, if you don't count the four, there's more in the rear than in the front.
In the front, correct.
Okay, and Mr. Steck is claiming that Mr. Keller introduced new testimony during his rebuttal and would like to speak, and I'll look at that.
Well, I'm not aware of any new testimony, that rebuttal rebuts what the other person said, and it presumes that they didn't say it before, so
The testimony is
My advice to the board is, no.
Testimony is over. I'm closing the public portion of the meeting. Board members, well, before we get to board members' comments, if you choose to make any, I'm gonna ask a question of our first alternate. Amy, are you there?
I am here, Joe.
Did you have the opportunity to listen to the prior testimony from the last meeting?
I, I did. I'm also wondering, could I, could I, sorry, Joe, I did.
I asked that question because one of our board members had to leave in the middle of the testimony tonight, and we're going to break, we're gonna break down the voting after the board members have had the opportunity to speak, if they choose to do so. We're gonna break down the voting tonight with one vote for the conditional use, which requires five affirmative votes, and one vote for the other three variances that were listed. So, I asked you the question, Amy, because since our second alternate did, could not make the meeting tonight, and one of our regular members had to leave in the middle of the hearing, that means you're moving up to a voting member, and that's why I wanted to know if you heard all of the testimony tonight and at the prior meeting.
I, I have, and understood, and I just have one question for you, Joe. I know there's been an awful lot of testimony, but can, there's one thing now that I'm confused about, and I'm wondering, can I ask Mr. Keller one question?
What are you confused about?
The parking. May I ask Mr. Keller a question about the parking?
I think the testimony was that there are four parking spaces in the front of the building that are substandard, that don't meet
My math isn't working somehow. Mr. Keller, so there are twenty in the front, if you count those four, and nineteen in the back, so that gets me thirty-nine, but I thought
And then he testified that there's four on the side, so it's nineteen, sixteen regular
Okay, that's how we get, sorry, I missed the four on the side, that's it, thank you, yeah. Okay, great.
All right, board member, does anyone wish to speak to this matter before we, I call for a motion to either affirm or deny.
Could I just indulge your board in a, in a brief thirty-second summation here?
If you keep it to thirty seconds, yes.
I, I promise I'll be very brief. And I just ask the board to have common sense. We've, we've all been to sub-shops. We know what a sub-shop is, we know what it's not. And to call a sub-shop a restaurant frankly is stretching the term restaurant. It is a very limited operation. So, I ask the board, please, let's use your common sense, we've all, we've all eaten at a sub-shop, we've all taken out a sub-sandwich. I also wanted to say, we have seen the reports of your engineer, Ms. Callahan, we have no issues with the report. We've, we view the report of your police, who has no concerns. We've looked at the report from your fire department, we have no problem with the request there, which are for a knockbox, which already exists, as well as numbering other premises, we could do that. We have no problem with your forester, he had no comments on it, and again, we have no objection to Ms. Davitt's noting review with respect to the application. So, I just wanted to confirm for the board, with respect to your expert reviews, there are no issues on our side, will comply with recommendations in all of the reports. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, board members, anyone care to speak to the issues, or do you want to go to the vote? Yes, Steve?
So, yeah, this is the case when, when it first came before the board, hey, Steve, come, come closer to that microphone.
Okay, is that a little better?
Yes.
Yeah, when it first came before the board, I was actually in support of the application, and it's really been the strength of the objectors' presentation that has kind of swayed me the other way, but I'll also go to the, one of the points that the applicant, applicant's attorney just made, which is that this is really a sub-shop, not a restaurant, and so when you, when you think about Panera, right, I go to Panera all the time, it's a restaurant, and so one of the things that the objectors talked about is the clientele that you'll see in a sub-shop, which will be, you know, more likely to be a lot of contractors. I don't see any contractors ever going into Panera, I just don't see that, and I'm a pretty regular guest there. No one parks in the back of Panera, except for maybe the employees that I, that I've ever seen, but, but, but when it comes down to the positive and negative criteria, so that's really what it boils down to, so the negative criteria as presented to the, by the objectors is very, very clear, it's crystal clear in my mind. Now, the positive criteria is a little different, I don't, beyond the tax revenues that this generates for the town, I don't really see it as offering a meaningful benefit to the residents of the town. I certainly see it offering a benefit to the people that are driving up and down Morris Turnpike, which come from all over the place, right, not really the residents of Short Hills, Milburn. So, it's in that, and I want to be brief because it's really late, but that, that's really what has swayed me into, into not wanting to support this application.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just, I have a short comment. I, I'm having, actually, like Steve, I, when I first went, you know, read the application, I didn't see it as a big negative, I, I thought it would be okay. Now, in listening to how this, how, how it would work, I don't actually see how this use is very well suited or particularly suited for the site. I, I'm having, it's sort of a disconnect, I have no problem with the use, I just don't see the site being a really good site for, in terms of access, in terms of the fact that this kind of use would probably have people eating in the car, in terms of the way food is distributed now with Uber and Lyft, and, and I, I just feel, DoorDash, I, I think that it doesn't seem like a very good use for the site.
Thank you.
Jim, I would like to add a comment. So, I completely agree with Steve and Joy. The site doesn't seem suitable for this use, although I'm a big fan of Jersey Mike, and would love to have it close by, I think people could enjoy a different kind of sub-shop, but I think this site particularly for safety perspective, I've driven in that area many times, and we, from turning into that parking lot, there is definitely a safety concern also when you increase the number of cars going in and out of that site. So, having listened to everyone's comments, I'm also not in support of having this open in that specific site.
Okay, I'm
You know, Joe, I'll just, just wanted to put my comments on the record. While I, you know, feel for the neighbors' concerns, I actually disagree with my fellow board members who've spoken. I think that the site is perfectly fine and suited to have a sub-shop. I, you know, I, again, I have listened to the residents, you know, in the surrounding neighborhoods' concerns, but it, it, it hasn't swayed me. I, I think that the site can handle a sub-shop. I don't see it being a problem for traffic, I think that it would blend right into the rest of the area, and when you're going down Morris Turnpike, I, I would definitely be in favor if there was some way to buffer it, I mean, if we're, you know, voting to approve it, if there was some way that we could add a little bit more of a buffer to try to allay some of the, you know, local residents' concerns, but I would be in favor of the application, to support it.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna ask now for, and we're gonna limit the motion to the, the conditional use variance, the one that requires five affirmative votes. Is there a motion either to grant or to deny that particular application? Limiting ourselves now to the conditional use variance that's requested.
I'll move to approve it.
There's a motion to prove. Is there a second?
If there's no second, the motion will fail, and someone then should make a motion to deny it.
I was about to say that the motion fails for lack of a second. Is there a motion to deny?
I would make a motion to deny.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
I think Wolfgang seconded it first. Eileen, will you call a roll on the conditional use variance application? A yes vote is a motion to deny.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
No.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Okay, and even though, Joe, even though the D3 has been denied, which makes the other variances moot, just to have a complete record here, I would ask someone to make a motion on the C variances and the site plan approval.
So, I move denial of the C variances and the site plan approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
No.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now, I don't have my watch, what time is it, folks?
Ten twenty-seven.
Ten twenty-seven. Well, we're still gonna take a three-minute break. We'll be back here in three minutes and hope that we get at least one or two more matters taken care of. Thank you.
Good luck.
Three minutes.
You're a slave driver, Joe.
Well, we, we usually, we usually do go to eleven.
Okay.
Eileen?
We don't usually hear any new testimony after ten-thirty.
No, where does that, where does that rule come from?
That's how he's always done it.
Joe, when you got up and walked away before I told everyone else, you're sitting there singing my praises, you know I was a half hour late to this meeting tonight because I had the wrong time?
Yeah, I know.
I
Can I ask which matter we're going to hear next?
Well, we're gonna, gonna hear the next one on the agenda, you gotta hear Dorfman, right?
That's not the next one on the agenda, you went out of order.
Wait a minute, hold on.
You did MBK first.
Bacconi South would be the, is first on the agenda, so that, if you're gonna do another one, that would be the one that go.
There's no way you're getting through that in a half hour.
No, that's
You might get through the generator, you could probably get through the generator
Yeah, you know what, Eileen's right, the generator.
You, you could probably get through that or the, the patio on Milburn Ave.
I would say, I would say the one that I know we can get through
Is the generator.
Is the patio. So, why don't we, why don't we do how it
Actually, Peter Van Sant was, that was the one that was supposed to be on the August second.
Well, it's like Peter, and we can get
I think you could whack that one out of here.
I think we can get those to the
If we get that one, then we could probably go over to Rattick as well. I don't know what we're gonna do about the rest, I don't have any open agendas until November, so I really don't know what we're gonna do. You told me that the Jersey Mikes would not take long, and that's why, you told me
Who said that?
You told me we didn't have that much more to do. That's why you told me to put it on the sixteen.
You contemplated thirty minutes for the Jersey Mikes, if I recall.
Yes, you told me it would take no more than a half an hour.
Hey, listen, you guys are gonna keep on talking, you're gonna burn up the half hour. Which one do you, which one are you going with, the generator or Van Sant?
Van Sant is the generator, Lee is the patio.
Let's do Van, let's do Van Sant next, and then Lee. I'll make an announcement. Okay, we're back on the record.
Okay, let me, um
All right, for those of you in the audience
Hey, Joe
Obviously
Joe, you're developing that problem.
This first case tonight.
Eileen?
I know.
Took a very long time.
Joe, you need the phone.
You need the phone.
Phone, we can't hear you.
Hold on a minute. Can you, can you hear, you can't hear it, I need the phone?
You need the phone.
Otherwise, you, you're, you're too
Can you hear it now?
Yes.
Yes. No, he doesn't have that phone on, I can hear the delay.
You can't hear it, I need the phone. Can you hear me now?
Joe, we have a big delay in your Joe, we have a big delay and you're coming across choppy. You need that phone.
Eileen, can I have those numbers again?
Hit the red dial.
I know.
Hit the red dial.
We're going to have to do the numbers again. Can you give me those numbers?
Sure. Okay, one, three oh one. Seven one five. Eight five nine two.
Say in the end. Three three oh one.
Seven one five. Eight five nine two.
Am I back? Can you hear me now?
No.
No.
You have to dial.
No. Still no.
No, you're frozen.
I guess you did. Yes, you did. Let Jessica take over.
You want me to take over?
He's going to take over as the chair. We're going to call Peter Van Sant at three twenty-two Taylor Road South.
Yes.
Mr. Van Sant, can you unmute yourself and can you put your video on? All right.
There we go.
And can we ask court reporter to please swear Mr. Van Sant in? You're muted.
No, I'm not muted.
You're not muted.
Yeah, I got it.
Court reporter is muted.
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, and by the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
It's Peter Van Sant, three twenty-two Taylor Road South in Short Hills.
Okay, Mr. Van Sant, can you tell the board why you're here today?
I'm here seeking a variance so I can install a standby generator on our property.
Okay.
Generator is about two feet, requires a two-foot variance to my closest neighbor, the side that we're going to put this on. And that's what I'm seeking is a variance so we can put in that unit.
Just to be clear, the setback required is twelve feet, correct?
That's correct.
And how many feet are you proposing?
Two. An extra two feet, so it'll be a total of ten feet between my property and the property line of my neighbor, which is their driveway, and the building structure on the other side of their driveway is a garage.
Do we have any? You don't have any experts or anyone with you, right? Just yourself?
No, I do not.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the audience who has any questions?
Jessica, I just would like to indicate that the survey that was submitted to me indicates that the generator is going to be eight feet from the side property line where twelve feet are required.
Right, correct. I don't know where.
Eight feet, I'm sorry. I apologize. That was.
So it's four feet, not two feet. Thanks, Eileen. Thank you.
Sorry, I apologize.
Okay, so we're looking for four feet. And are there is there anyone in the audience who has any questions?
Jessica, can you hear me?
I can. Okay. I I lean it up.
I have one question of Mr. Van Sant. Mr. Van Sant, are you planning to put any shrubs or other types of material, plant material around the generator?
Yes, absolutely. We will landscape it, so you will not be able to see it from the street. I've spoken to my neighbors. They're among our best friends, the Jeffers next door. The unit will be closest to them. In fact, I began this process by telling them if they have any objection, I will not apply for this variance. They had no objection and they understand we will treat it properly and we will camouflage the unit as best we can, and they're in support of that.
Well, do you have room between the new generator and that tree that you have on your front lawn to put plantings?
Yes, we do. There's a shrub-like tree that has many stalks on it. We're going to be taking that out. And then we will landscape that area once the unit is put in.
All right, you understand the landscaping has to be evergreens and they have to be at least four feet above the root pole. You understand that?
Yes, I do. I do understand that, yes.
Okay. Jessica, continue.
Okay, do we have any any other questions from board members? Okay, does anyone in the audience want to make a statement? Okay, I don't see anyone. Do any board members want to make a statement?
Yeah, so I'd like to I'd like to make a motion to approve with the condition that the new generator will be shielded with planting, not only from the street, but also from the neighbor. Got it.
Do we have a second? Yeah, I'll second that.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Should I take a vote from Joe?
Yes, take a vote from Joe, yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
All righty.
It's approved.
Great. Thank you all very much and thank you for your patience. I've sat in throughout the entire hearing and I was clean clean shaven when it started, so.
This is what they do.
That's an old Jon Stewart joke.
We're on vacation on the West Coast. Have a great day, guys.
Bye-bye.
So are you guys going to call it quits or are you?
Let's knock out another one if you can.
Thirty-eight seventeen.
Here isn't.
The patio?
Yeah.
Patio.
Oh, my God.
Joe, are you taking over for this one or do you want me to stay on as chair?
Go ahead. You do it.
You're on a roll. You just knocked out an application in twelve minutes.
Okay, all right, let's keep going. All right, so we've got four oh two Milburn Avenue. The applicant is Howard Lee.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Good evening.
And wait, just just raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, and by the truth?
I do.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Howard Lee, H O W A R D, last name Lee, L E E. And my address is four oh two Milburn Avenue, Milburn, New Jersey, zero seven zero four one four four one.
Okay, Mr. Lee, you don't have any any experts with you tonight?
No, just just my wife is here as well.
Okay, is she going to be testifying or just you?
I don't believe you can testify. Yeah, you probably saying something, right? Yes, she might.
She needs to raise her right hand. Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, the whole truth, and by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name for the record, please.
Ruby, R U B Y, Leung, L E U N G, four zero two Milburn Avenue, New Jersey. Okay, and do you want to tell us why you're here tonight?
Oh, hi. Good evening, Chairman and Board. We're looking to build a patio in our backyard and we submitted an application which was rejected because it violated variance six oh six two E three A, the twelve-foot setback from the sides of my property. So we filed the variance to be able to build this patio.
How many feet from the property line is your proposed patio? You said that twelve feet is required. What are you proposing?
We have not. We do not have like it proposed, I would imagine, probably. Right now, we have about on paper, it's this five point three feet from one side and seven point eight from the other side. But I mean, the patio has not been fully scoped out, but it would probably be no more than that. It would not be up against the property line.
Yeah, but but if you're asking the board to grant a variance setback, the board has to know what relief are you seeking?
Okay, we would be seeking relief of five five point three on one side and then seven point eight, five foot three inches on one side and seven foot eight inches on the other side.
Okay, it's not five point three, it's five point three feet, you mean?
That's correct.
That's right, that's right.
According to the survey, the patio will be four point two feet off the right side property line and six point seven feet off the left side property line. That's submitted to me.
Based on the survey.
Yeah.
You are seeking a four point two foot setback from the right side and a six point seven foot setback from the left side, correct?
That's right, that's right. Thank you, Eileen. I'm sorry. I read I read the extent of the variance, not the proposed usage. Okay. Sorry, it's my first time doing this. I apologize.
So if you if you had a chance to visit the property, you noted that it's surrounded by a very high fence. All the properties have fences. And this is a very, very long lot. That's the hardship, right? The hardship is that the lot is very long and it's actually very narrow. Patio proposed is rather modest. It looks like it's just, you know, a sufficient patio for some outdoor dining, a barbecue, something along those lines. It seems very reasonable from my onsite visit.
All right, let's let's take just just clarify. There's no is there anyone in the audience who has any questions of this applicant? I don't see anyone. Any any board members who have any questions?
I have a question. What's the required lot width in the zone?
In this zone, the required lot width here in the ours. I don't know my book. I'm going to say it's fifty feet.
It's forty. It's either forty or fifty feet depending on the lot area.
Is it a single-family house?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, then it's then it's a. I don't have.
It's forty feet for a single.
It's forty foot required.
To build the house, did you did you need to get variances for sidewalk to build the house?
No, they meet the four-foot requirement for the side.
Well, it is in that in that district. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it clear to me. I just I guess I'll still comment. It's clearly a hardship if their lot is only twelve feet wide and forty is required.
Any other questions from board members? Anyone in the audience who wants to comment? I don't see anyone, board members. Anyone want to comment or make a motion?
I move approval.
I second.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Okay.
We're on a roll.
Good luck.
Twelve minutes.
All right, eight minutes to knock one more out. Yeah.
Thank you too much. Thank you so much, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
I have been. I know Mr. Dorfman has his hand raised. I know he was here before and had his hand raised.
Excuse me, I can leave. It's I'm sorry.
I'm going to put you into.
Okay, okay, I'll wait. I'll let you guys operate it. I'll stay here.
You're good to go. So yep, you're out of here. Um. Yeah, I know, Mr. I have Mr. Dorfman and Mr. Sukas, who I believe is the attorney for Bakone.
No.
No?
Or is he Dorfman's attorney?
Oh, okay. No, James Curris is the Dorfman's attorney.
Okay, should we bring them over to just see what they?
Why don't you bring them over to see what they want to? They want to say something. Let's see what they want to say. Mr. Mr. Forrest, who do you represent?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, Joe.
Who do you represent?
Mr. Dorfman.
Okay, so you want to address the board right now?
I was just checking in as 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 I heard that it probably would not happen. Mr. Dorfman is paying in excess of a thousand dollars an hour for his experts to be here. So if we weren't going to get reached, I wanted to get us released. If we were going to get reached, I wanted to know that so he could make a proper investment.
It's it's ten fifty. What's the board's preference?
Joe?
We've never gotten before the later than eleven o'clock.
Yeah, we can't go past eleven.
Definitely not.
Okay, well, no way you're going to finish that case in ten minutes, so.
So my problem is my client has building permits. His property is not buttoned up for the winter and we're waiting for this to be heard so that he could finalize what his building plans are and continue with the construction of the property. I know Ms. David had mentioned November as an opportunity, but it's 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 this is, I think, the fourth time this case has been listed.
Eileen, can we get them on sooner?
We only have one meeting in September. That's the problem.
And what is scheduled right now at that meeting?
We have to put them on in September. We've got to hear this.
We also have Bakone, which we have to hear because I have county officials who are breathing down my back right now.
Maybe the answer is we're only going to be limited to those two cases in September.
We already have four on the agenda. Two of them are uses.
Right, right, but the ones that are on the agenda, have they have they started yet? Because this case, I'm looking in the pile here, and Dorfman has started. This is a continuation.
Right, but we only heard their testimony once because the first time and the second time we couldn't hear them because of deficiencies. You know, I'd be happy to put them on.
We'll have to put them on.
So is has Eileen, is this notice in order for tonight for Dorfman?
Yes, he renoticed for the pool equipment location and provided me with that information. So he did renotice.
If that's the case, why doesn't the board take jurisdiction of Dorfman, acknowledge that the notices are in order and then continue it to the September meeting without need for further notice? That's my suggestion. If Eileen says the notice is in order now.
That would be much appreciated. I did get the affidavit today and I know you got the green slips last week, I think.
So, Joe, is that what you want to do?
Yes, definitely.
And so for record, when is the September meeting, Eileen?
September twentieth.
So.
That starts at seven, John.
Dorfman application, which is. Dorfman application, which is case number 3792-21, it's going to be continued to the board September.
20th.
Meeting for continued hearing without need for further notice.
Thank you, Mr. Drill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay. We have one more hand raised, the audience.
It's 10:54. Are you guys trying to see how close to 11 you can get?
We have to carry, this is William Sukas. He, I, we have to carry the other matters to something.
Yeah, you're, but, but what dates are you going to care, what dates are you going to carry them for? Do you have dates certain or are you going to carry them all, that September 20th date, then carry some again?
We'll have, we'll have to do that. That's what we'll have to do.
We carry it to the November meeting, because that's all I have. I don't know.
And, and Eileen, what's, again, I mean, I'm ignorant of this, but what's, what's scheduled for October?
October, both agendas are full, like with like six applications on each, five and six.
Okay, so.
If you want to carry, carry the, well, are we going to deal with Bakone first?
Yeah, I think you should deal with Bakone first.
Is that Mr. Sukas? Are you the attorney for Bakone?
Good evening, Eileen. I am the attorney for Bakone. I appreciate it. You've all done yeoman's work this evening. Why I, I raised my hand because I, I had similar issues to, was it Mr. Dorfman's counsel? You know, we've, we've had Bakone, you know, here with some professionals, you know, paying. So I just wanted to, to, I understand that we're not going to be here tonight and I wanted to chime in, see if we could be, if I could be released and when the rescheduled date would be for Bakone.
We'll have to do Bakone at the next September meeting.
Okay, so if that's the case, let's, we'll make an announcement that, first of all, Eileen, what's the status of the notice in Bakone? Will they, will they continue to tonight with no need for further notice from last time?
Yes.
Okay, so, and when is the time to decide, Bakone? When does that expire? For, it was easy because they had a, they had a notice deficiency. You know when the time that the, the board has to act on the application expires? It's 120 days from when you were deemed complete. Anyone know when you were deemed complete?
It was deemed complete on June 18.
Didn't, didn't, didn't we talk about, didn't I consent for an extension?
You did give me an extension until, I thought, the end of August.
Well, if, if they were deemed complete in June, July, August, September, October, the board doesn't have to decide it till October because it's 120 days. So, that one's fine.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, for our application.
But it's 120 days.
Wait, wait, wait.
Hold on.
To the memorializing resolution.
No, not, 125 days to decide. They were deemed complete on, they gave me an extension of time till August 31th because they were actually being completed on January 11.
Ah.
So we have two extensions, yeah.
Okay, so let's get an extension of time then until the end of November, just in case something else goes wrong. Mr. Sukas, you agree to extend the time the board has to act on the application to November 30th?
Sure, yes.
And then let's carry the hearing, continue the hearing with no need for further notice to the board's September 20th meeting. And this is Bakone South, this is application 3767-20. How's that sound?
Perfect.
So September 20.
September 20. Okay. Okay, Eileen, what else, you have?
We have.
Other matters on the agenda. You have Boydman.
Boydman and.
And Amy Sharma.
Sharma.
So what's the status of those two? What's with the notice and when were those deemed complete?
Thank you, Mr. Drill. Thank you, Eileen. Thank you, Chairman, board members. Have a good night, everybody.
Okay, both of them were deemed complete on June 18.
So the board has, and they're, they're both for variances, so the board has 120 days, no timing problems. And were there notices in the paper into the 200 footers for tonight?
Yes.
So, and were the notices in order for both of them?
Yes, they were.
Okay, so then the board can take jurisdiction over both of them tonight, declare the notices are in order, and then these could be continued to, July, August, October. These could be continued to the board's November pick-a-date hearing, but you'd make it subject to the applicant agreeing to extend the time to hear these, let's say, to December to play it safe. And if the applicant doesn't agree to extend it, then you would convert your, your carrying of it into a dismissal without prejudice, just so you wouldn't have an automatic approval.
Right.
Everything I just said?
Got it. So our meeting in November is on November? November 1st.
November 1st?
Yeah.
Okay, so, let me make an announcement for both of these separately. Let me start with Boydman, which is case number 3815-21. On this one, I would ask that the chairman agreed to adjourn, take jurisdiction, adjourn the hearing to November 1, 2021, but subject to the applicant agreeing to extend the time to decide, that the board, that they consent to an extension of the time, the board has to act until November 31. If the applicant doesn't agree to extend to December 31, and instead of adjourning it tonight, it would be a dismissal without prejudice. Is that all right with you, Mr. Chairman?
Definitely.
Okay, can I just, Doug Miller has raised his hand and he is the architect for, I think, Boydman. He's for one of them, maybe Sharma. Do you want to hear something from him?
Yeah, if he's from Boydman, let's hear it. If you're some shirt, let's take care of Boydman first. So if he's the architect for Boydman, let's hear from him. He's for Sharma, let him just wait.
He's for Boydman.
Mr. Miller, you have to unmute and you have to put your video on.
Hello.
Hello there. You heard the whole discussion, right?
Yeah, I heard the whole discussion. I'm actually the architect for both Boydman and.
Yeah.
And Sharma. Okay.
And Sharma, yes, exactly. So is there a reason why we can't get continued to the September meeting?
If you're going to be continued to the September meeting, then you're going to end up being continued again because you saw what happened tonight. They continued six things for tonight and they substantively, I mean, they took care of one, and then they were able to take two short ones, but I just think it's unrealistic.
To be continued then till November?
Yeah, I mean, that's realistic. You want a realistic date or you want an unrealistic date?
Well, I guess I'll just have to convey that to my clients. I appreciate everything and, you know, what you can do to squeeze us in, but I guess you can only do what you can do.
So convey to both of your clients, please, because I'm going to make an announcement on Sharma also, that the board's going to adjourn it without need for further notice to November 1, but the client has to, to extend the time, the board has to decide until December 31.
Okay.
Okay, if they don't do that, then instead of an adjournment, they're just going to dismiss it without prejudice, to let you file it again because they don't want to get in a situation where there's an automatic approval. They're, they're being inundated with applications.
I understand.
Okay, so we made.
You know, the, the virtual format, it just, things take a little bit longer. So what we could typically finish in four hours onsite, you know, it's a little harder. I think once we get back onsite, you know, things will move a little better.
Okay, so we made the announcement on Boydman, so now we'll make the announcement on Ama Sharma, which is case number 38-18-21, that the hearing, first of all, the board's going to take jurisdiction, the notices are in order. The hearing is going to be adjourned to November 1, 2021 with no need for further notice, subject to the applicant giving Eileen a consent to extend the time, the board has to act on the application to December 31. The applicant doesn't do that, then instead of adjourning to November 1, it'd be a dismissal without prejudice. So could you please relay that to both of those clients? Mr. Miller?
I will, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, do you agree with that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You've now finished your agenda.
Let's, let's ask if there's anyone who has any matter to present to the board that is not on tonight's agenda. I hear none, seen none. Who are none? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank goodness. Have a nice night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.